Greenwich Plaza development that we're going to be speaking about mainly tonight, where the railroad station and the movie theater and stores are located. A very small part of the, I guess, orange parcel will also be involved involving a new railroad station building that's being proposed. But essentially, what you're going to hear tonight is mainly dealing with that light yellow piece. The blue parcel is owned by Connecticut Department of Transportation, I believe under lease to Metro North, that's where the railroad tracks run. And below it, and on the left-hand side, you'll see the parcels enumerated. Parcel two and parcel four are the areas in which, first of all, the drop-off pickup area for the eastbound trains are located, and also the Greenwich Plaza office buildings. Parcel one and two, and a portion of parcel four, which is shown in the middle as track one, were purchased by Greenwich Plaza, Inc., from the New Haven Railroad in the, oh, well, in 1967, at which time the railroad, you may remember, was in bankruptcy. At that time, the town and Greenwich Plaza entered into a transaction whereby track one was given to the town for no consideration, the town already owning track two and three, and thereby ending up with all of track four. And the parties entered into an air rights agreement whereby the air rights over parcel four were leased to Greenwich Plaza so that they could build those two buildings, subject to a number of requirements, including the payment of annual rent, and also the requirement that Greenwich Plaza construct what has become the commuter parking lot under parcels two and four. Those rights, the air rights lease, the town's commuter lot right over parcel two, all will end in the year 2057. And so this became the moment that the Ashforth family that controls Greenwich Plaza, Inc., determined that we should look to the future in trying to formalize a relationship with the town that will permanently provide the town with the commuter parking lot and provide additional public benefits. The next image shows pretty much what's there right now in plan view. The theater is shown in blue, stores are shown on either side of the railroad station, which is bright yellow, and then there's a 36 space parking lot on the left-hand side of the image, and then the office buildings are directly south of the tracks. The next image shows what is being proposed, you know, in planned form. The theater would now move from the east side to the west, the station would be enlarged, the theater would be enlarged, although reduced in numbers of seats, and the stores would pretty much stay the same in terms of floor area. And in the corner of Steamboat and Railroad Avenue, where the existing theater is located, would be a new privately-owned public park. Now, the proposal that is going to be before you tonight really relates to three items, as you enumerated it, Mrs. DeLuca. One, the site plan, two, the special permit, three, the text amendment changes. The municipal improvement, which was filed with the commissioner, a commission under Charter Section 99, will not go forward tonight merely because the Board of Selectment has not yet referred it. We expect that they will, we hope that they will, and they will do it hopefully at the, by the time of your next meeting on this, on this application. You'll hear tonight about the, not only the design and the development and what's being proposed, piece by piece, but you'll also hear about the planning that has gone into this application. Planning, not only by the owners of the property, but also the town, through the First Selectment's Office, they have engaged outside council and outside appraisers in terms of issues relating to the MI, which will be presented to you at another time. Should you, by the way, have any questions about the municipal improvement, notwithstanding the fact that it's not before you tonight, Ben Brandy, the town administrator, who was key in working out a draft agreement with, between the parties, is here to answer questions. In doing its planning, not only did we, did Greenwich Plaza, Inc. talk to lots of folks, but we also had input from public officials, from commuters, because there are lots of commuters that we have access through, to, through the Greenwich Plaza office buildings, but also through the Connecticut Department of Transportation, who is deeply involved in the operation of the railroad. And one of the people that Greenwich Plaza dealt with at some length is here tonight, Rich Andreski, he is the bureau chief of the Conduct Department of Public Transportation, and he will be here to talk a little bit about what he thinks about railroad traffic in general, where it's going, where it's been, and how this proposed new train station impacts it. One of the things that I heard you discuss at the, at your staff briefing this morning had to do with public benefits, and you wanted us to focus in on what public benefits were being offered by this proposal, and we'll do that as you, as you hear the rest of our presentation. But I'd like to kind of summarize them so that you keep them in mind as you're listening to the presentation. A part of this application will involve a new railroad station in the place of the one we're familiar with, on the north side of the tracks. It will also involve the construction of a new, smaller station on the south side of the tracks to address increased commuter use of that eastbound facility. It will also involve a new park that you'll hear described for you tonight. As a part of the MI presentation, you'll, you'll hear that an agreement will be entered into by Greenwich Plaza, Inc. to permanently maintain at its cost both the railroad stations and the, and the park. There'll be improved pedestrian access to the train platforms, which you'll, you'll hear about. There'll be a considerable improvement in the drop-off and pickup experience on both sides, and you'll hear our traffic consultant, John Canning, from the firm of Kimley Horn, address that. There'll be an opportunity to address the entire streetscape at one time, and I thought that was interesting in light of a provision of the P O C D that reads, and I'm looking at page 26, "At the present time, projects in downtown tend to be evaluated on a site-by-site basis. Such a process is heavily dependent on the regulations we have rather than the type of development we want. By preparing and evaluating alternative scenarios, Greenwich can identify preferred policies and discourage incompatible activities." And I think that ability to look at an entire block, a whole area of the town, is something that we can offer that really no one else can, as a result of the fact that we own, we being Greenwich Plaza, owns the entire block. And also, in looking at the P O C D, I was interested too in the fact that the importance of the movie theater was mentioned in, in the P O C D, also on page 26, as follows, Greenwich's, I'm sorry, "In addition to retail establishment, community facilities such as the senior center, the arts council, the Bruce Museum, and the movie theater contribute to making this downtown area a special place." And, and we think it does, and we've spoken to many people who felt that the retention and, retention and improvement of the theater was a worthwhile goal. And finally, the improvements to the train station, the main train station, that you'll hear, really also conforms to the P O C D in that on page 44, it states, under the heading of, of what we should do to promote transit, there are, "The Greenwich Train Station is an underutilized resource for solving traffic problems in downtown." And we think that a lot of what we're proposing tonight, the way trains are used, the way we believe trains are going to be used in the future, really comes under that heading. And of course, the Downtown Planning Committee addressed the same thing in terms of improving access to, to the train as one of its goals. So if I may, I'd like to introduce the, the balance of our team to describe in detail what we're proposing tonight. You see a lot of photos around you, you'll see them on the screen, and that will help us, help us with our explanation. The first speaker tonight will be the co-chair of Greenwich Plaza, Darrell Harvey, and he's going to talk a little bit about the background of the existing public-private partnership between the town and Greenwich Plaza. He's going to talk about his observations and research about train use and understanding of where it's going. He's also going to introduce Mr. Andreski from Conduct to talk a little bit about their views of public transportation, specifically the train use. And then to get into the details of the design and the architecture will be Frank Pyle of the firm of Bayer, Blender, and Bell, who've been working with Greenwich Plaza for quite some time in developing the plans you're going to see tonight. And then finally, John Canning, as I mentioned, is going to talk a little bit about the traffic issues, specifically dropping off and picking up at the station. Also, not speaking unless you have some questions for them, are the project civil engineer, Craig Flaherty of the firm of Redness and Meat, and Eric Rains, our landscape architect, who is the chief designer of the new park that's being proposed at the corner of Railroad and Steamboat Road. So if I may, I'd like to introduce Darrell Harvey.
You mentioned that you had some research from commuters. Would you be able to give us the results of your commuter research at some point in the future? Could you send to staff what you learned from the commuter research that you did?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Thanks very much, Bruce, and thank you to the--
Thank you, Mr. Harvey.
--to the, oh, let me grab my water. Hey. If you're going to speak for an hour and a half, you need some water.
We won't be here--
I know, exactly. But thanks very much, Bruce, and thanks to the members of the commission for scheduling a special meeting to hear our project. As Bruce mentioned, I'm co-CEO of the Ashforth Company, and I'm here on behalf of our family company. Got a number of my relatives here, including my co-CEO and cousin, Andy Ashforth, Hank, Hank Ashforth, back there, my nephew, Ryan Harvey is here tonight, numerous other members of our company, and our outstanding team of consultants, many of them are here also. We've been working on and have extensively, extensively researched this project for about the past six years, with input from multiple experts, who I will be citing tonight. As Bruce mentioned, we view this as a tremendous opportunity to continue our partnership with the town by dramatically revitalizing what we developed 50 years ago. The existing buildings actually do represent what was a huge improvement when they were completed in 1970. All you have to do is go back and look what was there before, and you realize what a major change that was in '70. But we feel they've passed their useful life, given a number of significant changes since 1970, that I'd like to briefly discuss to try to put our project in the context of trying to look ahead for the next 50 years. The first change relates to how rail travel itself has changed, and is projected to continue to change in the future, based on our discussions with and our research received from Metro North and Connecticut Department of Transportation. One of the most significant changes in Metro North train travel, which is somewhat surprising, involves the riders themselves. The ridership, as you probably have guessed, has increased dramatically, just in sort of raw numbers, and continues to do so, having increased in Greenwich by over 20% in just the last 15 years. Now, over 8,500 riders use the Greenwich Train Station every weekday, and if you add that, you add weekend use results to that, comes up to about 2.5 million total rides per year to and from the Greenwich Station. But probably most importantly, in 1970, the vast majority of those riders were commuters. Even 30 years ago, 67% of passengers boarding each day were still commuters, and many of us still think of the train as just a commuter line. But now, according to the MTA, commuters on the Metro North Line are actually in the minority, at only 48%, and that percentage is projected to continue to drop as the number of non-commuters using the train grows. So what we've tried to do is be more focused on this growing 52% of riders who are not commuters, and the prediction that their ridership will continue to increase, which makes some sense as I-95 continues to get more and more congested. It's actually a hard concept for me, for example, my age, since I commuted in the 1970s from this area, and it's very hard for me to get rid of that image of bouncing along in the train with a bunch of commuters reading their papers and thinking, that's all this train really does. It's been hard to get that out of my own mind. But the statistics are compelling, and a couple of additional facts are, the number of people reverse commuting to Greenwich from New York City, and the number of commuting to Greenwich from other parts of Connecticut have also both increased dramatically, as has the number of Greenwich residents now commuting to other parts of Connecticut. For example, more riders are now getting off in Greenwich in the morning, every weekday, coming from east and west, than the total number who get on in Greenwich to commute into New York City. And that's just a dramatic change from 1970, when we first built the existing station. So we believe we need a revitalized transportation center to address these new trends, including a new station on the south side for the increasing number of passengers who arrive or depart from the south side, particularly during inclement weather. Also, trying to look forward, the rail travel to and from New York City, we anticipate growing further when the Grand Central East Side Access Project is completed. That's due to be completed in about 2022. It's not exactly a model project in that it's 15 years late and three times the, the initial budget, but it's supposed to be completed around 2022, around the same time our proposed project, by coincidence, would, would also be completed. And East Side Access, just to dwell on this for a minute, results in about, if you're not familiar with it, it results in about half of the Long Island Railroad trains that are coming into New York being able to cut across to the west, across the East River, and come down into Grand Central. And the big deal for us on that is that frees up access at Penn Station, because now half the trains coming from Long Island Railroad are going to Grand Central. What we're able to do is then start using the Amtrak line, Metro North can use the Amtrak line, to cut down into Penn Station. So it comes down through the Bronx, swings through Long Island City, and comes, comes into Penn Station, which is a dramatic change in terms of freeing up access to Penn Station with its separate labor force for both people who are commuting into the city and for people who are commuting out of the city to come out to Connecticut. So in effect, we'll be linked to another labor pool through Penn Station once the East Side Access is completed. And that, that is a dramatic change. It happens--
Sorry.
Hi, Mr. Levy.
Mr. Levy's just arrived.
And that happens, in case you don't know, it's right after New Rochelle is where the tracks diverge, and you can either go, the Amtrak line goes off to the south and heads down to Penn Station, and Metro North now heads directly in, into Grand Central.
Just a quick question, Mr. Harvey. You said that 52% of the ridership now are not commuters. What is a non-commuter? What do they do? What's the definition of a non-commuter?
Someone who's not commuting to their job, not, not traveling to their job.
So they, what, they're in the city?
They're going into the city, or they're going elsewhere in Connecticut, and they're traveling, and they're--
Are they going to jobs in other locations?
No, non, non-commuters. This is, which Mr. Andreski will talk about a bit, this is a different type of commuter. These are, a lot of them are off-peak. These are the numbers that are going up as people are looking for other forms of transportation besides driving, and I'll get into that in a second--
Okay, thank you.
--as, as patterns are changing. It's a very good question. These statistics are pretty, are pretty surprising.
As soon as you open a window.
Sorry, occasion's a question. So are these people possibly working flexible hours but not engaging in a traditional commute, eight to five, or nine to five, whatever it is? Is it possible that they are sometimes working at home and then are able to have flexible hours? Or are you saying that they are not engaged in commuting associated with work?
It's described as not, non-commuting, which I connect with the job, but also, Mr. Andreski will talk about this and be making the distinction between discretionary riders and non-discretionary riders. And that, to me, is perhaps a better way of thinking it. If you got to get to your job, you have no discretion about that, and your attitude toward the train and its purpose is very different than when you have discretion of not using it and you decide to use it. And what we're starting to see now, we're particularly seeing it with younger people, a lot less dependency on cars, some of them having, couples only having a single car, much more used to using Uber wherever they're going, or Lyft wherever they're going. A lot of the younger people not even getting licenses. I mean, this is sort of shocking to me. When I was growing up, getting my license and getting that first car was absolutely the top of my list. A lot of the younger people we talked to and have spent time interviewing say, I don't want to spend my money on the car, I don't even want to get a license right away. So we're seeing that trend growing. The younger people just view car travel a lot differently than we do in the expense of a car differently, or they rent a car for, just as needed. So it's a, I'm glad you raised it, because this is a really important finding, and it's very, we think it's very important when we're looking ahead, how this station will be used over the next, over the next 50 years. Another change that's happened is how riders get their tickets. The ticket office in our train station has been closed for several years now, because the tickets are mainly purchased from ticket machines on the platform or purchased over the internet. Even, even I'm gotten pretty facile at being able to get these things just in time for the conductor to come by and check my, and check my iPhone. So Metro North has indicated, we don't need ticket office in the station anymore, and what that allows is a major redesign of the station, because where it is, it's a block, it's a big blocker right now in terms of trying to do something attractive up right on the, on the platform. Picking up on something I said earlier, another major change has been the way in which people get to and from the station. That's also changed from strictly individual riders and cars and taxis, instead to using Uber and Lyft, particularly the young people, as I mentioned. And in addition, you've got shuttles coming to and from the station, which we didn't have back when we built the original station. We got bikes, a lot more people biking. We got, in the future, probably driverless cars at some point, plus a lot more pedestrians looking for access to the, to the station, as Bruce was mentioning. So we definitely, in our opinion, need better drop-off and pickup areas, and the Greenwich Downtown Planning Committee indicated in its report, we do need better pedestrian access to the, to the train, and that's one of the things we've tried to provide for. But Metro North and, has been a huge help, Mike Schiffer, Vice President for Planning, was at our press conference a few weeks ago, was particularly helpful, and the state has been very helpful to us on this through Conduct, as Bruce mentioned, particularly Commissioner of Transportation, Joe Gilletti. Joe Gilletti, who was brought in by Governor Lamont, who actually I'd worked with before on other projects related to 303030, which I've been a big advocate for and worked on in my role at the Business Council of Fairfield County. And so I got to know Joe then, but Joe's particularly qualified to be helping us on this project because he was the former president of Metro North. So he spent his life dealing with trains, so he is a true expert. And he has allowed us to work with Rich Andreski, who's here tonight, and he's nice enough to have come down just to share with you his view of the project. So on that particular point, I'd like to try to get Rich up to give you some insights. I've suggested to him, since he's traveled a long way to be here, that he'd be pretty early in the program, and he could probably leave, so you might want to ask him some questions while you've got him. But he's been terrific in helping us, so I'd love to have him share his, his view. Rich?
Good evening. So I'm Rich Andreski, Bureau Chief for Public Transportation for the Connecticut Department of Transportation. My address is 2800 Berlin Turnpike, Newington, Connecticut. So I'm here to support the Ashforth Company's Greenwich Station redevelopment project. The DOT that I represent welcomes a significant private investment in our state's public transportation system. First, a little bit about the DOT and what we do. We are responsible for the operation and maintenance of the statewide public transportation system, and this includes the CT Transit bus system, six passenger rail lines, including the New Haven Line. We own most train stations, with the obvious exception of Greenwich and a couple others, many parking lots, and we jointly own the railcars and locomotives that operate in service with Metro North. This statewide enterprise transports 84 million people every year, and it's arguably the backbone of our state economy. But here in Fairfield County, public transportation plays an even larger role, where over 10% of all residents commute by bus or train. So Greenwich Station, again, is, you know, one of these stations that we don't own in Connecticut. There's one other. It is the fourth busiest rail station, active rail station in the state, after Stamford, Bridgeport, and New Haven. So Darrell alluded to these changing travel patterns. With these changing travel patterns, we now see, again, slightly more people coming into Greenwich every day than leaving in the morning peak period. And while some of these commuters and others throughout the day are walking to their nearby destinations, many are using Uber and Lyft and other services to connect to their final destination. And that's particularly important as we think about the evolution of the train station. The other significant change in travel patterns, again, Darrell alluded to, is shift from non-discretionary, which typically is trips for commutation, to discretionary trips. And this is continuation of a longer-term trend, not just here in the New York metro area, but throughout the country. And to give you a specific data point on that, commutation on the New Haven Line has actually decreased slightly, the commutation trips, since the beginning of this year, while discretionary travel is up 2.8%, and that's just since January. The customer experience, including station amenities, are particularly important to attracting and retaining these discretionary travelers. So again, commutation typically have your head down, headed to the office in a hurry. You have generally fewer options, and the pain point of traveling on I-95 is so great that rail is sort of a no-brainer. As a result, we now think of stations not strictly as rail stations, but more as transportation hubs. The ability for people to wait safely and comfortably, out of the elements for a shuttle bus, a car service, is a critical need, as much as reliable and comfortable train service. The proposed building on the south side of Greenwich Station will serve this purpose. Travelers arriving from New York or other points will enable, will enable customers to remain on the south side, waiting in comfort for their connecting service. They'll have a warm, dry space in the winter and a cool place to sit on a hot summer day. Now, there's ample research on how a high-quality transit station can improve, improve public perceptions-- Now, there's ample research on how a high-quality transit station can improve public perceptions and actually increase ridership. According to one federally-funded Transportation Research Bureau study, upgraded facilities and customer amenities, such as those proposed in the Ashforth Company's redevelopment proposal, improve the overall public perception of rail and transit, increase the sense of safety, and make transit more efficient and easier to use. The Ashforth Company's proposed investment in Greenwich Station and adjacent supporting retail development is particularly important and welcomed from our perspective. The customer experience at Greenwich Station, again, it's the fourth busiest in the state, will be significantly upgraded. Customers will benefit from improved communication, new waiting areas, new restrooms, and new retail options. Additionally, the Ashforth Company is bringing private capital to bear at a time when state financial resources are especially constrained. If not for the private capital, it would likely be ten years, perhaps decades, before a similar public investment could be made at Greenwich Station. And DOT and Metro North Railroad, we work very closely with Metro North, are prepared to support the Ashforth Company's redevelopment project. Specifically, our team will provide feedback on the station design and ongoing technical and field support during construction. Collaboration on the design and construction of the station around an active electrified railroad will be key to its success. We look forward to seeing the completed project come to fruition in the next few years. This project will have lasting benefits for our rail customers, and we hope for your community for years to come. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Andreski, I'm having a hard time getting my mind around here, the difference between a discretionary rider and a non-discretionary rider.
So we start, we start with US Census data, which shows journey-to-work trips, and it does it by census tract. So if we look at the latest available US Census data, it tells us the story of how people are traveling for commutation purposes. So the US Census makes a distinction between commutation and non-commutation. So there's a pretty significant body of work, both available from, from the US Census Bureau, as well as some of these research agencies, such as Transportation Research Bureau, that talk about how people travel and for what purpose. Typically, just to simplify a bit, typically, we look at commutation as occurring between six and ten AM on weekdays. We also have, Metro North does periodic customer surveys, and that's another data point that we use. So discretionary travels, think of it this way. They're typically folks that are making a trip, other than for work, maybe for dinner, maybe for a Broadway show, maybe for a doctor's appointment. Typically, the reason we consider them discretionary is many of them have alternatives. So I talk about congestion on I-95. Typically, off-peak, weekdays and weekends, your congestion levels are different. Parking rates at many locations, your parking fees tend to be lower. Discretionary riders often travel in groups, so if you're going to see a Broadway show, you're probably going in a group. So these are, these are individuals that have options, and they're always evaluating, right, the hassle factor, the cost of the trip, including parking and tolls. And so these are the folks that really, where the amenities really count. They tend, they tend to, the perception, again, of how easy it is to use the train, the sense of security and safety, that all comes back to the way the facility is designed and maintained.
Could you comment on the ridership over time, past few years? Has it increased? Has it stayed the same? And also, what is the significance of commuter traffic diminishing?
I'm sorry, the significance of commuter traffic to?
Diminishing.
Diminishing. Well, it's, it's a, it's a good question, and there's a lot of, a lot of, a lot of ways to answer that. So I'll echo what Daryl said about the, the increasing preference among a different generation for rail travel. The significance is that these are trends, they're not, they're not short-term trends. We believe they're long-term trends. The significance is that the way we provide service has to evolve. There was a, there was a focus at the beginning of my career on commuter parking and park-in rides, and that has subsided a bit, right? Because there's, these are alternatives, and many people are not using the car to get to the, get to the train. So that, I think that's one factor. The other factor is the, the evolution of the line as a, more of a rapid transit system. So we typically had very frequent peak-period services. And now what we do is, if you look at our latest train schedule, you'll see half-hourly service all day in both directions. So you can go to, well, most of the day, not twenty-four hours. But we have, we have significantly more service today than we did thirty years ago. And, and so that, the significance of that is also on, on the demands to the state in terms of how we invest. We have more pressures today than we've ever had. Not just financial pressures, but pressure to increase capacity on the trains, operating budget pressures to get more, to find more resources to increase service further. And then we have this new vision from the governor on thirty thirty thirty, and which is taking what is already a really high-performing system and making it even better with faster service, more express service. So there's all these external pressures on the state.
What factor does the population have? Can you comment on how static the population is and whether that's a, whether you see that trend continuing and how that impacts rail travel?
Yeah, that's the most interesting part of this. The, the population has not increased proportionate to the ridership, right? It's lagged. So the population increase isn't what's driving the ridership increases. It's, it's, it's more frequent trip-making. So the same person years ago might have been making one trip, one round trip per day. Many, many individuals are now making multiple trips within a day or, or more than five round trips in a week. So we think, again, we think that trend, my observation, just watching other regions, Boston, LA, other parts of the country, we're seeing, we're seeing this trend play out just about everywhere.
Just wanted to ask you, some things are a little bit off-topic, but who is responsible?
Please, we cannot hear, sorry.
Oh, yes, certainly.
You know you have to have your mouth.
Okay. So who is responsible for maintaining the platform and the reader boards and emptying the trash?
So I'm gonna, I'll speak to the communications and the technology. The DOT's responsibility is the implementation of investments. It's, we own the, we own the tracks and the infrastructure to the state line. We fund the improvements to the railroads. Display boards, as an example, are something that we, we pay for. But as, as the owners of the station, the Ashforth Company makes, makes that available to us.
What's that? What is that? You said Ashforth makes that available?
The, the space in the station. So for example, in, in the, in the station building, the display of the, of the technology, it's, it's our hardware. It's our, it's our technology. The back office system is ours, but the, the space for that is provided by the Ashforth Company.
So, so Ashforth is responsible for maintaining the platform and everything on it? Or so if there's an issue, who is responsible for reporting the issue and who's responsible for maintaining it?
The maintenance of the station is the responsibility of the Ashforth Company.
Okay. So if there's a leak in the roof on the, the structure on the, on the tracks, you, yeah, Ashforth is, needs to be apprised of it?
I'm, I'm.
And then they will take care of it, however they do? Is that the idea?
I'm gonna, yeah, I'm gonna let, would you like to speak to that?
Before you do that?
I won't go in there.
I'll just answer quickly. We do not maintain the platform. That's a dangerous area, so we are not sweeping and pranking. There's a distinction, which you learned quickly, took me a while. The station, what is the station? Is the station the whole thing, including the tracks? Or is the station the station building? So the station building, we own and we do maintain that. But the responsibility for the platforms and making sure they're cleaned and maintained is not us. That's between Metro North and ConDOT. Because we are not, and we're not insured for working on the platform at all.
Mr. Andreski?
Yes.
I assume that for your position, you project ridership numbers in the future? Would, would it be okay to share those with us? Would you be able to send something to our staff so that we know what your projected ridership growth is, discretionary, non-discretionary? Number one. Number two, have you looked at how they will arrive at the station? You said you're no longer looking at parking considerations as much. How will they arrive to the station? What would be the, would there still be the kind of drop-off pickup? Anything that you have, that you've presented to your own department in terms of the trends you're seeing, will help us, I think, assess this? If you could connect somehow through the applicant and with our staff, we'd be very grateful.
We will make that available. I will, I'll just clarify, the, the ridership forecasts are maintained and performed by Metro North, and we, we can, we can, we can take what they.
You can steal them?
Yes, of course.
And then the other thing is, again, any information you have on what travelers look for in terms of the amenities? Because although something is being presented and you've reviewed it, to actually have the surveys, we, it would be very helpful. We were, in fact, thinking of surveying our own community generally to find out what our citizens want from their own train station. But if you have a lot of that data, you could save us a lot of legwork.
Absolutely. And also make available the, the study, the federally.
The amenities increase the ridership.
The amenities, how amenities are linked to increased ridership.
The federal study, yeah. Unless it's a million pages long and we won't be able to understa, okay.
No. It's straightforward. It's, it's well-written.
Okay, great. Okay, that would be super helpful. Thank you.
Mr. Andreski, you mentioned peak times before. What are their peak times for the station?
Well, I, I don't have hour-by-hour train counts, but what I can tell you is that we, we define peak period as six to ten AM.
And then four to eight?
Four to eight.
Seven?
Yeah, four to eight PM.
What about weekends?
We don't generally consider that peak travel. But you, it depends, again, time of year. If you're looking at the holiday season between Thanksgiving and the end of the year, that is a, that's a peak travel time on weekends.
Anything else? Oh, Mr. Harvey.
It's very intriguing, because we're looking at something that will hopefully be there fifty years from now. And there will certainly be changes in both how we get to and from the station and traffic on the tracks themselves. What can you tell us from your position, from a planning standpoint, that we might anticipate in ten years, twenty years? I mean, things that will dramatically change? And how do you incorporate that into bricks and mortar?
I love that question. I spend a lot of time thinking about that. There's a lot of discussion about the coming of autonomous vehicles and what that means for public transportation. I will tell you that in highly, in dense corridors, especially with connections to New York City, it's unlikely that, for the foreseeable future, train service will be replicated by any other mode. Train service is a very high-volume, high-capacity means of moving people. So I think, I think the future, as far out as we can see, is going to continue to emphasize rail. I think what will change is, is the way people, the reason people travel and how they get around locally. But the, the connection to New York City, I think, is going to just continue to grow in importance. At least, that's, that's my professional judgment.
Yeah. That's our assumption on the new plan we're working on as well. Okay. Nobody else? One more question? Two more questions?
You're ostensibly predating changes to this configuration at the railroad station on observed changing patterns, right? And yet, we've, I'm a little puzzled by the fact that population hasn't changed, but you're saying that the ridership has shifted. But in the face of the ridership shifting, it would seem as though there are more options for people, such as Uber and Lyft and other ways of transportation. So I'm confused as to what, what is predating the need for changes, given the fact that the population has stayed the same, is staying relatively stable? You're seeing shifting, you know, forty-eight percent, fifty-two percent, whatever it is. And yet, there's also new technology, new businesses coming in that are challenging the whole underlying rationale for a railroad, if you will, or the need for the use of the railroad. And you're seeing more short-term or short-travel distances being utilized. So I'm, but I don't know how that, all that comes together, because it doesn't seem to be, make a logical argument.
Yeah, you hit the nail on the head. It's, it's the trip purpose and trip length. So depending on where you're going and how far you're traveling, that's definitely a factor. While Uber and Lyft have made significant gains, as a matter of fact, there are more Uber and Lyft trips now every year than all of the bus ridership across the nation. So that, although that, that's an interesting statistic, what it doesn't tell you is that those trips tend to be shorter in length compared to a rail traveler. So rail travelers tend to make longer trips. And it's also the pain point. There's, there's very few good options to, to go to New York. You know, I, there's only a couple of ways to New York from here, depending on where you're ending up. And all of those ways are tip, often congested. They're often expensive. Congestion pricing is taking effect now in New York City. There's lots of reasons why people are now increasingly choosing rail. I, I think you, you know, the top-level number doesn't really tell you the story. So I, I appreciate the question. Maybe, maybe some of the data we can make available will help answer some of those questions.
Am I hearing that your objective is to increase, as DOT, to increase the rail use in the state? What's the benefit in this to DOT, in this project?
So every time an individual makes a trip, right, they're, they're participating in the economy. And, and so trip-making is, by itself, is not the goal, just to have people riding. But the, the movement of people, the, the access to educational opportunity, the access to medical care, the access to entertainment, those are all important factors in terms of making Connecticut more livable. They're important factors in terms of driving and stimulating our economy. We see, there's other, there's other research out there, again, I can make available, that shows that proximity to rail increases property values. It increases in income levels. Income levels tend to be higher around rail. So, I mean, there's, there's these other benefits of rail that exist because rail is there.
Did you get your question? And let's, let's, okay, we kind of need to move on, so.
There's a quick question. You've obviously participated with Ashforth and sort of the overall scheme, but if it weren't for funding and if the state owned this facility, what, if anything, would you do differently than the design that we see before us right now?
So, you know, we, we've not been involved too long with the Ashforth Company. They've approached us and we've, we've had a couple of meetings. The, it's sort of a theoretical question in my mind. There's, we, we are generally playing catch-up on the investment in our public transportation system. So I would love to have a conversation about sort of, if we, if resources, we weren't resource-constrained, but we tend to find ourselves just barely keeping up with, you know, bridge replacements and station platform replacements and just the, the basics. I think, from what I've seen of the Ashforth Company's proposal, it's a very fresh, forward-looking, contemporary, you know, it's a, it really opens up the sightlines, brings in natural light, improves the sense of safety and security. So we're, we're very interested. And I, again, I'll go back to my earlier comments. We, it'd be a very long time before we could make such a similar investment.
Quick comment and then, and then a question. The excitement.
The exciting thing about this project for me personally is that for a long time now, people in town have been trying to get some sort of art installation underneath the underpass from 95 and Metro North to connect Upper Greenwich Avenue, upper downtown, if you will, with, with Lower Downtown. Bruce Museum is putting a big investment into, into the museum itself, and so the timing is right, it seems, and I just wanted to note for people that are, are interested in this, because I know people have been working on it for 20-plus years, that you've been very helpful in, in that respect, and you've sent a copy of the process for how one goes about going through this art installation and who to speak with, and just wanted to note that that is on the record and that is, I think, something that we want to pursue. And then my question is unrelated to that. Could you just, very, very briefly, just give us an overview of what the 30-30-30 project is and how that will impact the Greenwich train stations?
Yes, so Governor Lamont's 30-30-30 vision is 30 minutes on the train. You should be able to make a trip 30 minutes from Hartford to New Haven. That train trip should take another 30 minutes from New Haven to Stanford, and then 30 minutes from Stanford to New York City. That trip today takes close to three hours. It's an exciting vision. We, we're still working out the details about how we're going to move towards getting to that, those type of trip-time improvements. We're, we're taking it very pragmatically and step-by-step. It's a vision, and so we have, the governor will announce ultimately his plans for that vision, but, but that's generally the broad strokes, faster, higher-performing train service.
Will that mean expanding the, the right-of-way, or what will actually, potentially physically be the impact in Greenwich?
Yeah, so stay tuned. We're, we're doing a mile-by-mile review of the railroad. It, what we are doing is being very, we're grounded in this, in terms of what needs to happen. So we're looking at everything from design of, of trains to design of stations to higher speed tracks. It does, it does not mean, I can be very clear, we're not proposing any bypasses or high-speed express tracks coming through the downtown. That's, that's not in the cards.
Good, I heard it here. Bye. We have you on the record. Okay, thank you, Mr. Andreski.
Thanks.
Yeah, not to keep us on this topic for too long, but I, I have been spending a lot of time on 30-30-30 myself. The, the two big factors are first, getting the state of good repair. As Rich said, the state first needs to get its tracks up to federally mandated standards. That's actually causing the trains to go a little bit slower now, because you're not in good repair, it's not fully safe, you can't go at full speed. So that, that is step one, which is not as expensive. The study I was involved with is being confirmed now by the, by the Department of Transportation. Part two is the longer part, which is the number of the bridges need to be replaced, and they need to be funded for getting the second part of, of 30-30-30, trying to, trying to simplify it. But my conclusion has been, for what it's worth, that probably the future of the economy in Connecticut really depends on being able to move its human capital around more efficiently. And that's going to be very hard to do on places like 95, which is already way over capacity. So being able to, when you look around the world at other places that have rapid transit, we're way behind on the rapid transit in our trains. And it's a lot easier and a lot less disruptive to be able to have more trains running faster than it is to double-deck 95 or squeeze more people on 95. And a very quick story, which I can't resist, is we brought in Michael Gallus 20 years ago. He's a transportation expert, consulted around the country with many metropolitan areas. He took a look at Connecticut for us and issued a study, and he said, "If you don't fix your transportation system, Connecticut will become an economic cul-de-sac." And he predicted that in 1999. We really made no improvements. We got through the Great Recession, and you watch this recovery, and you saw how Connecticut didn't participate in it from an economic point of view. And we asked him, "Well, what do you mean, 'economic cul-de-sac'? Where's the ending?" And he said, "Well, my prediction would be, you'd probably have decent development and activity, and economic activity to about Stanford, and that's about where it would stop." And that was 20 years ago that he predicted that. And so that's, in my opinion, has come completely true, and I believe that rail travel is going to be the, the answer. The right-of-way changes to get the speed are not that dramatic, there's some curves that need to be straightened a bit. There's also technologies, there's also digitization that's occurring. All of these, I think, are much better than working on 95. And to answer the question about the benefits to the DOT and the whole system, the more people you can get on the train, the fewer people you have on 95. So actually, some of the income that comes from the federal government for 95 can be used, if it's a high-congestion area, on things like mass transit, buses, multimodal solutions, and especially train. So that's how the feds are viewing it. Also, New York is encouraging this. New York MTA, for the first time, they are really encouraging growth out through the Bronx, up through Westchester and into Connecticut, because they're, they're getting, it's very, getting very tight in New York. So they're looking up the East Side. New Jersey's going to be blocked largely, because these tunnels have to be fixed for a long time. So there's a lot of pressure on trying to improve transportation. Joe Giletti is a huge plus on this, because he's in Hartford, and for the first time, we've got someone in Hartford who's connected to New York and Metro North and the MTA, and making all this work. So we think that transportation is hugely important, particularly rail travel, for the future of the state. So this ties in with some other stuff that a number of us have been working on, and I think it would be a great statement if Greenwich had the, if that's the truth, that Greenwich would have by far the best train station between Boston and New York. And that would be really exciting and make a statement. Also, we're the first stop in Connecticut, so that, that also makes a statement. So that's, sorry to have gone off on, on that for a bit, but that's some of what we picked up on the future of, of transportation. Now, I'll only be a few more minutes, because I want to mention, in addition to the changes in rail travel, we've noticed major changes in the town of Greenwich over the last 50 years, particularly in the downtown area. To identify just a few and to place yourself, I was pretty, I was in college when we were building the one 50 years ago and worked on it a couple of summers, but I do remember very well what Greenwich was like at, at that time. And what in 1970 was viewed, and I didn't use this word, another local politician mentioned this word, so I take it in the right context, in 1970, that lower part of Greenwich Avenue was sort of viewed as the seedy end of Greenwich Avenue, to the extent there was anything ever seedy in, in Greenwich, but that's how it was viewed. So it didn't seem odd then to be building a big, sort of almost walled theater at the bottom of Greenwich Avenue, because there just wasn't that much there. But when you think of how the high-end retail stores and restaurants have moved farther and farther down Greenwich Avenue toward the corner of Railroad, and they're just poised to turn the corner, right where that is, we think that's no longer a spot for a big, for a big wall. That's one of the reasons we want to move the theater, besides the fact that it's going to fall down soon. That's, that's another, another important factor, because neither Bowtie nor we want to invest in an antiquated theater building when, as I'm going to mention, theater-going has changed dramatically also since, since the 1970s. The other thing that's happened is a lot more office buildings down in the, in the downtown area and around the station. We were one of the first. It was totally spec building, a lot of people thought we were nuts when we, when we built that building. Who the heck was going to come out of New York and be, be in a building in Greenwich? So there are a lot more office buildings now making use of the station and the reverse commuting and, and so forth. And then this movie-going is very interesting, because it also has changed significantly. The new theater model is a multiplex with reserved, which I think is incredibly important, if you notice, luxury recliner seating with food and beverages, including alcohol, so that you have more of a, of a full-service experience. And if you haven't gone to one of these modern theaters yet, I really encourage you to. It's, it's quite a different experience. And again, the younger people, as we look forward to building this for the next 50 years, we're trying to figure out what they're likely to want versus what we want, just the way I don't think we should be thinking about creating a station that's better for the old-fashioned, heavily-dominated commuting population. So the problem is, the seats are bigger and they recline, so you need more space even though you have less seats, sort of, and it's a little bit counterintuitive. The fewer seats you have, the more attendance you seem to get, because people really like in advance being able to reserve the seats for the night they want, be able to come. They couldn't see it on Saturday night, so they say, "Oh, look, on Wednesday, those seats that we like are available, we're gonna, we're gonna get them." And you actually have the attendance going up, and the seating prices are not much different. But we currently have, Bowtie currently, our current tenant, has 654 seats in its auditoriums now. The new theater would have, that we're planning, would have approximately 546 seats. So that's a reduction of 108 seats, or about 17%. But to do that, to allow them to get the facility they want, we need about 25,000 feet versus about the 17,000 square feet that we have now, just to fit those larger seats in, even though there are fewer of them. If you guys can all follow that, it's a little counterintuitive, as I, as I said. And Bowtie has indicated, they believe they need at least 25,000 square feet to be able to have enough seats to compete as a boutique theater with the competition in the area. Just to give you some rough numbers, 25,000 feet here would be competing with 80,000 feet in Porchester, with the 14 theaters that are there. Stamford Landmark, which happens to be Bowtie, but here you're, you're talking about attracting people to Greenwich. Stamford Landmark is about 50,000 feet. Stamford Majestic, 40,000. Regent Norwalk, 40,000. Royal Norwalk, around 35,000. So for them to compete, they really need about 25,000 feet. That's why we're asking for some more space for the theater to make it viable for this type of a boutique theater. It's still considered a boutique multiplex theater at 25,000 feet. But the smaller auditoriums also provide a civic purpose for our, people like our film festivals, Greenwich International Film Festival, and the focus on French cinema, and also for private events, where you'd be able to rent a theater for a private event with a group, presentation spaces in the summer and for business and nonprofits, and they could be used in the mornings, particularly before their theaters, we have to work out parking with Katie to be able to do that. But if it's businesses that are using it who are already here, and they can have a small, say, 75-seat auditorium that can be set up for audiovisual and has terrific sound and everything, that would be, that could be a real plus for businesses in the area, and a number of people we've talked to have expressed an interest in that, businesses and tenants that we have. Joe Masher of Bowtie is going to speak later. He's here to testify about the changes in the theater industry and the possible additional uses of the auditoriums. We also have Ginger Stickell of the Greenwich International Film Festival, and Avery, Amory Ketchum of the French Film Group, speaking on the importance of the theaters and this change for their future, because they really naturally want to see the theaters continue. And lastly, I'm just going to say, during this last six years, in terms of trying to address the changes, we, as Bruce mentioned, have relied on the Towns Plan of Conservation and Development and the Downtown Development Report for insights into the Towns' vision for downtown, with particular focus, and the thing that I looked at very hard was the concern for, and I'm quoting, "The individual, the role of the individual within public spaces." And this is quoted from the Downtown Development Report. "By improving the aesthetic, making public spaces cleaner and safer, we place the emphasis on the individual, the pedestrian, the pedestrian in the downtown area. By improving the public amenities and adding to them, we encourage the individual to stay." The report also emphasized placemaking, the need to improve our public properties, and we think this applies to both the proposed train stations and to our proposed privately-owned public park, which, as we will describe in more detail shortly, is going to open the pathway that Katie was referring to, under the tracks with the ugly trestle. In one of our meetings with Metro North and ConDOT, we confirmed that there is a way, it's been done elsewhere, where you can put something attractive in front of the trestle that could be really attractive, and a sign or a mural or something like that, as long as it's not against it. They don't want anything done to it, because it starts masking decay and problems, and they, for maintenance, they've really got to be able to see it. So that trestle, which a lot of people have noticed, we believe can be made much more attractive, so we create a pathway and be able to lead down to the soon-to-be expanded Bruce Museum, which Katie was just mentioning, it just got a really nice bequest, and who we, who we have met with. And Suzanne Leo, their COO, is also here tonight to speak on behalf of the, of the Bruce Museum that we've consulted with. So finally, now, based on all the input, and I'm going to go through them all, that we've gotten from ConDOT, Metro North, Bowtie, Bruce Museum, the Towns' POCD, input from residents, commuters, talked to companies, owners, our own tenants, of course, who have many people commuting out from New York, retailers in the area, and, and what has changed over the last 50 years and what's predicted to come. With all that sort of in our pocket, we turn to Bayer Blender Bell, who has tremendous experience with transportation centers, including Grand Central, lead designer of the restoration of Grand Central in terms of what makes a space more vibrant in a place that, uh, community, the residents would like to spend time, get their idea of how we should design this for the, for the next 50 years. And now I'd like to turn it over to Frank Pryle, for probably what you've really been waiting for, is the explanation of, from our architect, of how we arrived at this. I'm sorry.
I believe, you seem to have changed the number of seats proposed for the new movie theater. What the submission we have says it will be 525?
Yes, the, 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 what was submitted was sort of a placeholder for a theater.
And so the correct number?
The, the number that Bowtie thinks they can fit in, what we've done with Bowtie, and they've been terrific for us, is-
It's 546?
It's 546, is what they think they can fit.
Okay, thank you. No, I didn't want to have a long discussion, I just wanted to get this.
Yeah, well, it's, it's-
That's fine.
It's in flux, and I'll tell you, one of the reasons is, we're finding, as we get into the construction, there's a cantilever we might have to do over, coming up by the railroad tracks, it's quite complicated construction. We might have to shrink the building slightly, so the number's been flex, you know, influxed with these seats, how many they can fit and how many theaters they can squeeze in that. And we do not have any binding agreement with Bowtie, but we want to work with them, because they've been terrific tenants for us, but we really can't do much with them until we know what we're allowed to build there, and whether it'll be able to be a viable number of seats for a theater. But I'm glad you picked up on that, because that number, since we submitted that placeholder, that was not their final design, that was just sort of a placeholder for around the number of, of, of seats.
Okay, thank you.
And Frank, I think you're on finally. Thank you.
I'm going to see if I can do this a little this way perhaps, so I can, apologies to people behind me, but since I'll be addressing some visuals, it will be helpful to be able to see both. My name is Frank Pryle. I'm a principal with the firm of Bayer Blender Bell in New York City, where I have been employed for approximately 25 years. And I have worked almost all of that time in or around Grand Central Terminal. It's been a great opportunity, it's been a great learning opportunity, more than anything else, it's informed just about everything I've done ever since, and it's been one of the reasons that I'm here tonight, not the only reason, fortunately. Rather circuitously, but in a very sort of logical way, it led from one thing to the next. I have worked with the Malkin family for many years on a building you may have heard of, called the Empire State Building. Some of the issues are similar. My practice has mostly been involved with restoration, but restoration of active buildings, restoration of buildings that are not simply monuments or museums, but that have, present particular needs for current use and for future interpretation. Much of my practice has been involved in train stations. Makes sense from the work that I've done at Grand Central, it's led to work in Hoboken, the famous station, St. Paul, and other smaller ones along the Metro North and Jersey Transit Lines. But I came to Greenwich through the Malkin family, having been recommended to work on the transformation of the local post office to Restoration Hardware. And I stood in this very room, I think, approximately eight years or so ago, and went through a very similar process. And it's nice in any profession, but especially in architecture, to come to the next project as a result of the success of a previous one. And I think, again, there are some lessons learned from that, and things that go specifically into how we addressed some of the design that you'll be seeing this evening, that I will be able to explain to you. The charge from the Ashworth family was quite simply to take all of that information that you've heard so far from the people who spoke before me, and somehow create an architecture that speaks to all of those needs, to the programmatic needs of the site, to the expectations of the people in the town, and the town officials of Greenwich, but then also somehow looks to the future as well. Very simple assignment, right? Well, we think that we've done the best that we could, and we do it in the way that Bayer Blender Bell always has, and we call it by doing our homework. We start with a very thorough examination of everything around it, everything that came before, everything that exists, and a little bit into the future as well. And I'd like to explain a little bit of how that work that I had done originally for Restoration Hardware was able to inform and make me think a little bit more carefully, and I think maybe even more successfully, about this project as well, which has a slightly different set of expectations and criteria. Go to the next one. This plan resulted from an examination of the local area that we did- This plan resulted from an examination of the local area that we did. The post office is interesting, because it's not only a landmark on the National Register individually, but then it's also a part of the downtown historic district. So we needed to become intimately familiar with the district at large. Now, my first experience in coming to Greenwich was, as any other person experiencing it for the first time, very high expectations, taking the train from Grand Central, getting off, and wondering if I had come to the right town. Am I in the right place? Where's the train station? Where is the downtown? And I was disoriented for a while, because it took me a moment to figure out where to go, and it really was an interesting distinction. I had just finished a project in St. Paul, Minnesota, on the St. Paul Union Depot, which had a very similar arrangement of upper and lower town area. And the train station was essentially a bridge to those two locations. And in fact, one of the goals of that project was to lure people into the lower area and kind of create a circuit, if you will, kind of tie the knot that would bring people to a downtown area and give them something to do and a reason to be there, not only for the purpose of taking a train. So coming to Greenwich, experiencing it for the first time, and determining that it really took a while before to actually go up the hill before I'd actually arrived, was an interesting and, I think, very inspirational experience. But then we went and did a very diligent examination of all of the existing landmark buildings, how they were arranged on the street, what they meant to one another, how, what their origins were, what they were designed to do originally, and how they had changed and been adapted over time. And I won't go into great detail, but what I will say is that we were able to come to a series of conclusions and observations that informed the work that we did. And one of the primary observations I made was that the buildings of Greenwich have a similar character, and I call it a formal elegance. There's, it's not to say that they're simple or that they're dull, because the people who commissioned them were of means and taste, and were well-informed in how architecture should be designed, and they hired very good architects. But the buildings have a simplicity and an elegance which speaks to function, scale, purpose, and less about ornamentation and detail. So this was something that we could use to inform the way that we design buildings going forward. There is also a commonality of material. There's an emphasis on masonry, on brick and on stonework. But there's also an idea that there is a place, these buildings have a place in the community, they're sighted very carefully, and they're very carefully scaled as well. So all of that sort of informed the way that we would approach a new building, such as the one that I'll show you in just a moment. But very importantly, the site, which is at the bottom of the hill here, is what you would, we would consider the anchor. Really, sort of the destination, should be a destination, rather than a place that people arrive in and then leave very quickly. It should also have the alternate purpose of attracting people to it. And the lesson that we learned at Grand Central is very much the same. When we began our project twenty, twenty-five years ago, Forty-Second Street in Times Square was a place to be avoided. It was a place that you rushed through very quickly, only because you had to, because you were doing it, you were discretionary, you were not non-discretionary. You actually had to rush through to get to your train, and so it was a necessary experience. But we were able to transform that, take advantage of its location and of its inherent opportunities, in terms of its great architecture, and be able to lure people to come to that place because they wanted to be there, or there were other similar experiences that could be shared. We would talk about the future of a building. When I talk about the opportunities that are specific to its train station, for example, the future is not only in the numbers of people or how it's used to service the trains, but we see the future of the building being defined by the other experiences it can provide, the other reasons that people might want to come there. Is it simply a train station, or can it also function perhaps as a civic center? Can it also be a place where people gather to prepare for an entertainment experience? Is it a lobby, perhaps, which can also help people, attract them and come to the theater? Can it also provide retail opportunities? Can it also be a place to, in many ways, celebrate Greenwich, or provide a visual icon, a recognizable feature, something that people will identify with the town in a positive way? I think that Rich Andruski spoke to be other positive experiences that people will associate and create reasons that people will want to go there, even if perhaps they're not even taking a train. So this was the kind of the goals that we looked at. We thought that the site needed to be somehow attached to and connected to in order to provide continuity down Greenwich Avenue, so that you didn't feel like the town stopped here somewhere, but that you could then make it and come down to the station and also have retail opportunities and other experiences that would unite it, so that it was coordinated, so that it became a part of Greenwich, rather than feeling now as a separate entity. There's also experiences that, we talked about, the ability to coordinate with the Bruce Museum. There may be, on the other side of the train tracks, I'll speak about that in a little bit more detail in a moment as well. Here's an overall view of the new site. What I'd like to do is to go through and show you a little bit, in an overall view, some of the component parts, then speak in a little bit more detail of each of the individual pieces. I think what I'll do is I'll start at the bottom of Greenwich Avenue with the new park, which provides an amenity. It's a public park, which will have two specific functions, one as a place of relaxation, or a place for, to sit and respond, to relax on a pleasant day. It also provides better access up and to the train platforms. Immediately adjacent is new retail. This is an entrance pavilion here, and a tower, which will enable people to go into what we hope will perhaps be a place, perhaps a food hall, and I'll speak about that in a moment as well. Additional retail immediately next to it. In the center is the train station, which we consider to be the keystone, sort of the icon image at the center, anchoring the entire development. Immediately to the west is the new theater above the multiplex, and below parking, below-grade parking. Around the other side, on direct access with the north station, is the new south station. I'll speak about it in just a moment as well, with improved vehicular access. And there's also a bicycle stand on the opposite side as well, not visible in this image. Along Railroad Avenue, there is an improved streetscape. We will have more generous sidewalks with new trees, which will be more indigenous and be more actually sensitive to the local environment. We will have canopies, which provide a covered shelter for walking along Railroad Avenue. We will have an improved drop-off in front of the station with access to the bus stop on the other side, but then also much more generous, much safer drop-off for automobiles in front of the actual station itself. Let's go to the next. Here, very simply, just to kind of show and reinforce and plan what you saw a moment ago, Railroad Avenue, we're facing north. This is Greenwich, which turns into Steamboat. On the very corner, again, is this park, which is approximately thirty-eight hundred square feet. Immediately adjacent is a retail food market, and we envision that as a possibility of a new, excuse me, food hall, with multiple tenants who might be able to provide a variety of different types of food options. We see it as an exciting sort of destination. I have some images at a moment to show how we've done similar kinds of arrangements in New York City. Additional retail here with a combination perhaps of some retail staying. There is the Olive Branch Restaurant, which has a lease which it may stay. That's a possibility that the Ashforth's are considering at the moment. There'd be some construction considerations, how that would happen, but it's very likely that this piece will have structure which will remain, but will be stripped down to its just bare structure, and then rebuilt with new roof and new materials on the exterior to match what we do elsewhere. The train station at the very center here, the new north station, again anchoring in the very center, we think it's at the very crest of the hill here, so it's in its most prominent location to identify the site and give a kind of iconic image to it. To the left is the cinema. Access to the cinema will be through the train station, so the station has a much more, longer-term during-the-day activity, where it's open longer, longer hours during the day. I'll speak a little bit more detail in a moment. Underneath is parking, potentially two levels, one directly below, and then another possibly even below that further, that which would be intended for employees. Coming around the other side, on Art Street, and then up and into this new drop-off area, which will be widened. Coming by, a new area for bicycle and scooter Vespa parking. The numbers, of course, for bicycle commuting as a part of, you know, the multimodal access to train stations is just exploding, so many more people are taking bikes, cycles, and other similar sorts of vehicles to get. So this will be a place where they can be parked and then easily access the track platforms. And then our new south station here that we mentioned as a wonderful amenity, is certainly an improvement for people who are coming or going on that side of the platform, either commuting to points to the east, or any climate weather perhaps being picked up in the evening as well, with widened access by much safer here. Even arriving this evening at about five-thirty, quarter to six, this was a very congested and very dangerous and very inefficient area at that time. And here's what exists today, as one arrives at the intersection, you come down the hill, the intersection of Railroad, and Greenwich terminates and then becomes Steamboat here. It's the existing Bowtie Movie Theater, certainly is of its particular era, circa nineteen-seventy, with its very attractive split-phase concrete block. Certainly a building that has served its purpose, but whose day and time has come and gone. As I think Daryl very successfully expressed before, the function has changed. You know, the way that people use movie theaters, what they expect from a movie theater is completely different. It's not that they've gone away, they've just changed and transformed, and so people's expectations for the better now are much higher than they used to be. So for a number of reasons, both in terms of how the expectations of a theater, but then also programmatically, from a planning point of view, it made a lot of sense to us to relocate this building for a number of reasons. Number one is simply its presence, its kind of hulking and intimidating presence in this location, but then also because it allowed us to consider and reconsider in a better way, in a much safer way, access to the train platform, because many, many people use this access without actually even going up Railroad Avenue. People will park on the other side, on the south side of the railroad right-of-way, come underneath the overpass, and then dart right up, rather unpleasantly and unsafely, because these stairs now currently wrap around up and over the dumpsters from the movie theater and restaurants. So here's what we're proposing, from a slightly similar, slightly higher but similar point of view. There's a new park, designed by, very elegantly by Eric Rains. It's in development, so I won't speak too much to particular materials at this point. I'll just kind of give an overview to the, to the designed elements. And what you see here is a very large stone open area, surrounded by elm trees and local greenery. There's an opportunity right here on the corner, as I believe Daryl alluded to, for a coordinated exhibition with the Bruce Museum. There's a spot here where perhaps a sculptural item or some other kind of element could be rotated on a regular basis as a kind of allure, if you will, to a new connection that's being considered and promoted to the Bruce underneath the train trestle, which will also be improved in some way in coordination with ConDOT. The access to the train will be through the new stair here, which will be much more, much wider, a little bit, we've stretched it a little bit, so it's not as steep, and it makes it much more, much safer, much more pleasant to be able to get up and down. Now, the park itself is aligned with an open area, but then directly behind is a wonderful water feature, which is inspired by other similar pocket parks, like Paley Park in Manhattan, for example. And what it does is it provides an extraordinary kind of white noise. It's a really wonderful and relaxing experience to sit on a day such as today, and listen to the sound of the water behind you, kind of takes away or smoothes away the sounds of the urban environment and the trains behind, and it's really quite a relaxing experience. The park itself is also immediately adjacent to our new food and beverage location, so there will be an opportunity with tables and chairs to purchase food inside and then come out and sit outside, either, you know, as an activity for a morning, or for a quick coffee, or Danish, or bagel, if you're anticipating the arrival of a train. Similarly, the street experience, we've widened the sidewalks here. We've created a covered canopy to make it a little bit more pleasant to walk on an inclement day. The roof, you'll notice, we have included as much greenery as possible. These are green trays, which absorb water, which also provide an extra element of insulation to the spaces below. And then the area of the roof is also designed to collect rainwater and put it into a tank, essentially, which will then be used to recirculate within the water feature itself. So there's kind of a nice way of balancing it and using water that's existing, rather than having to draw it from the municipal system in a closed, recirculating manner. We have a close-up, where we show a little bit more of the activity that's possible in this kind of space. You'll see how it has direct access, visual access, to the food halls here. We have clocks on the tower to kind of emphasize its, and reinforce its identity as part of a transit-oriented development with the functional activity of the trains behind. And then this location here, where we've left it blank at the moment, but it's sort of a blank slate, if you will, an opportunity for coordination with the Bruce for some kind of art exhibitory. And these, we thought we would provide just a couple of visual images for the kind of food hall that we are imagining in that space. They're very popular. They've become very successful in the city, and they appeal to a younger generation. They're casual. There's an emphasis on high quality, on the individual identity of the actual tenants, the retailers themselves. What's most important is their branding and their kind of emphasis on unique food products. So what the, what the challenge here is to create a space that's almost like a black box theater in many ways. You fill it with a number of these different participants. They bring diversity of different kinds of foods, prepared juices, foods, for all manner, things that can be eaten locally or that can be packaged and taken with you. But the experience is one of sort of a mid-price level, and they're very, very popular with newer, younger generation. We see it as a place where people would want to come before going to the theater, for example, would be able to come in in the evening, stop here for something casual as an opportunity, maybe eat at the bar here, or, and then go off to the movie, or take it home. Sometimes you can call in advance and they will have things ready for you. We've done, I've personally been involved in two in New York City, one on the dining concourse level of Grand Central. We're actually investigating a redesign there, because that one's now aged out a little bit, and it's been kind of a learning experience, both pro and con. We were also involved in one not far away. It's called Urban Space on Forty-Fifth Street and Vanderbilt Avenue, which has been extraordinarily successful. And here's the railroad station. We know it's the railroad station, because it says it's the railroad station, but it's not necessarily what you would identify as a railroad station. It certainly was utilitarian, and it certainly served the need. I'm not, it's never the, we have an ethical obligation as architects not to diminish the work of architects who came before us, because we are very confident they satisfied the needs of their clients at that time. And we think that they certainly did here in this case. However, it certainly, it was quite utilitarian. What it did very successfully was process people, provided a place where a ticket could be bought, where you could wait outside of the elements, and then prepare for a train to arrive. But it certainly did not have much to say about the town of Greenwich. Certainly did not contribute to it in any sort of great or iconic way. It's not the kind of building that you would certainly, would appear on anyone's top-ten list of a building that you would expect to represent Greenwich in any way. It would also be difficult to, if you said, "Well, meet me at the train station," it would be hard to find, because you'd have to walk up the street. There's really nothing other than the marquee that identifies it, and although it's been redone relatively recently with this drive-it exterior, there's nothing much that distinguishes it from its, from the retail buildings on either side. And the dark glass also doesn't help to understand the function that goes on within. So what we've done is tried to create a building that satisfies all of those functional needs, but yet, as I mentioned a moment ago, also tries to look to the future, tries to speak to a new Greenwich, a Greenwich that's beginning to rethink itself and its priorities, to look to a newer generation, and to understand how a building can contribute to that change. Many of what, much of what you see here has been informed by what we've done at Grand Central Terminal, and that is, not that it intends to copy in any way what came before. There's certainly nothing here that would, in terms of... there's certainly nothing here that would, in terms of materials, would necessarily look like a neoclassical building from nineteen thirteen, but much of what goes on within and the inspiration that created is drawn directly from Grand Central. And that is that the building functions first and foremost as a train station and will facilitate the processing of people, the ability to get safely and quickly from the street, from their vehicles, up a set of stairs and to the platform behind, but will do so in a way that will elevate them, that will make them feel good about what they're doing, make them feel safe about what they're doing, but then also provide other opportunities while they're there as well. We'll actively encourage people to gather as a civic space, as a place where they will come to meet, to take advantage of other entertainment or food service opportunities around them, but will also then most importantly, create a place that, oh yes, that's the Greenwich Train Station, let's meet at the station, meet at that Greenwich Train Station, the one that you see when you ride by on the trains or the, the one that you see or that we've heard about, the one that, you know, the one that is on Railroad Avenue, the one that has that extraordinary presence on that street. So this is, those are the kinds of ways that we began to think about, and we've thought about what kinds of materials it would be, what it would look like. We wanted it to be transparent, we wanted it to be open, to allow natural light in, to create a sense of spatial excitement, to manage the light very carefully because you're very, you're exposed to a tremendous amount of sunlight that comes in during the day, so we have some techniques for managing it. But then also uses materials that speak to sustainability, to durability, and to timelessness. So the building itself, the station building, is sheathed in zinc, which is a material that's used in many stations today, but it's also been used, it's a recyclable material, and it is a very elegant and durable material that will age very, very beautifully. And the buildings adjacent to it, the retail building to the left and the cinema to the right, we're using brick, and we're using storefronts, we're using painted aluminum. The brick will be very carefully selected, it's from, it's a brick that will reflect the kind of masonry construction, the sort of solid volumes, and I said this formal elegance that was expressed in buildings that we've seen along Greenwich Avenue. In terms of access, I talked about a little canopy. Here, we've extended this marquee out to create a better sense of security and protection from the elements underneath. Working with John Canning and others, we have enlarged and made a much more generous drop-off zone on railroad. We have created a better connection across the street to the bus on the other side, again, all with a thought to how this works as an emphasis and an encouragement of this idea of transit-oriented development and of the active encouragement of pedestrian access. We want people to walk to the station. We want them sure they can arrive in a car, and they certainly will continue to do that, but one of the goals will be to bring people down here, encourage them to walk to this location, and to feel comfortable doing that. We also want them to walk at night, and we think that by illuminating this-
Mr. Prell?
Sure.
Can you do me a favor? Could you go back two slides?
Of course.
Yeah, that one.
Yep. To this one, the existing.
Yes, that.
Yep.
Forward, please.
No, the-
Forward. There you go.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Sure. And the night view again, just to begin to talk about how we consider this, one of the goals of the project is so that it's, the building will serve a function and provide amenity to the community, not just during the regular hours of a train station. So the hours will be extended, more people will be coming here, we'll encourage pedestrian access. It will be a beacon, an icon, we like to think, we use these words, but how we use them is important because it informs the materials that we use. The glass, we think, will provide visibility all the way through, there's transparency, will not really block any views because you'll be able to see all the way through to the other side. We did, the building is a little bit higher than what would be regularly allowed, we will require a variance for that, but we think that's important. We think that's significant because this building needs to be able to express itself, needs to be able to say that it is the most important component part of this large programmatic arrangement. It needs to be the building that's most visible and identifies the railroad station revitalization. Light is also very carefully controlled, I want to emphasize that the interior light that you see is reflective. If you look very carefully, you'll see that on the structural columns, there are uplights that are directed at a highly reflective ceiling with, what this does is allows us to create an interior glow with very, very little, minimal spill. So the light will be, it's almost like a lantern that has, that glows from within but does not give a lot of offlight. There will be no illumination that will escape from here and then illuminate the night sky. There will be no uplighting along the exterior. This is a little here, a little here, that's just the rendering conceit and a little bit of reflection that comes from interior retail lighting. But all of the lighting I can emphasize will be very, very carefully controlled, will be urbanistically appropriate, and will allow this to glow only internally as, again, as a kind of an iconic beacon on the crest, the very highest location of Railroad Avenue here. Next, the other way. There we go. This, just to kind of emphasize, again, before and after, I think the term used before was an underutilized resource. This certainly, I think, reinforces that idea. It served a purpose, and it did exactly what it was supposed to do for very long, but its, its time has come and gone, and we, the opportunity here is to take this and go to the, take it to the next level. At this point here, obviously, it doesn't even seem to read as a train station, so we think that what we've been able to do is to learn from this, but to be able to move on. To this, which is our sense of how this space can really be a celebratory location for the people of Greenwich. We want this, again, to function successfully as a train station but to mean so much more. And in order to do that, what we tried to do was to create an open, spacious interior, flooded with natural light but carefully controlled. You'll notice that the southern exposure is modulated by a screen of sunbreak here, and then the interior is, at this point, is still in development, materials are being considered, but we have proposed and are been investigating durable, timeless materials, local granites, beautiful bronze metal handrails. The wall could be sheathed in travertine, which is a direct reference to Grand Central Terminal. And again, this highly reflective ceiling above, which does two things, it's, it insulates and reflects sound, so it has a nice, it modulates the amount of interior sound, keeps it to a very low kind of hum, but then also allows us to reflect light during evening hours up and off of it, so that there's no actual direct light down onto the floor other than what's illuminated by the interior retail spaces and the cinema above. Right around this corner back here is the elevator access, there's two, they're sized as we learned from one of our early meetings with ConDOT, to allow first responders to access the platform should that be a necessity, so there's a technical background to all of the programmatic design work. Bathrooms are as well, are located around through this opening behind, but what you won't see here is the things that you might normally associate with a train station. Where's the ticket office, for example? And I think Daryl addressed that very successfully earlier. Well, that technology has changed. Here is some signage, we don't know yet quite what that will be, probably arrival and departure. There's more above here, which will signal, you know, people have come to expect now the signs that show when the trains are coming and where they're going, so there's that limited amount of information, but yet ticketing is all done either remotely or on phones or in another way that doesn't require an actual architectural programmatic space which would block the view. So that's a benefit, we've been able to take advantage of that technology and have a very positive benefit on the, on the architecture as well. Next. Now, we've gone around the corner, we're on the south side. This photo was taken on a very, relatively quiet afternoon, doesn't really do justice to the chaos that is normally expected there during a regular, normal business peak rush hour, but what you have is an existing taxi stand. These are the canopies for the platforms behind. This is the unfortunate but very efficient overpass that was installed by Metro North a number of years ago. Unfortunate only because we would have preferred other finishes, other materials, but that's a subject for discussion in the future. So what we needed to do is to transform this, we needed to identify what was wrong with it, what wasn't working well, and figure out a way to make it work more successfully for us. One of the things we identified was the narrowness of this roadway, at this point, between the existing taxi stand and this barrier here, this planter and ventilation barrier, is really just about one and a half lanes. So that makes it very difficult to drop or pick somebody up, to get the, and then to, or to just drive right by. There's a, right in this point, an area of significant congestion, confusion, and also danger. This vent actually allows exhaust from a significant amount of electrical equipment, switchgear, transformers, et cetera, that are, that address the office buildings immediately to the south, and then they are obscured here by these plantings. So what we will do as a part of this project is to relocate this barrier, just simply move it back approximately five or six feet. The vents will stay where they are, but they will go into the roadway. That will enable us to increase the width of this roadway to make it about twenty-four feet, I think a standard highway lane is about twelve, so that makes, we'll have drop-off, we'll have handicap parking, we'll have two lanes. John Canning will speak in a little bit more detail about this, but it's a very, very viable solution. But from an architectural point of view, that's all just the sort of arrival, departure, and transportation aspect. From an architectural point of view, we propose to do this, which is the addition of a new south station that Daryl and Rich Andreski spoke about a moment ago. I call it the younger sibling of the north station beyond, the same materials, the same sort of sun barriers and the, and the open glazing, but it will be conditioned, it will be a place to sit, it will be a place to wait for trains that are arriving or departing, or also if you arrive, you'll be able to wait outside of inclement weather for your rides to come. Again, the materials, once again, are the exterior zinc, the curtain wall is glazing, the double-glazing insulated glass, which is very energy efficient, and then a similar kind of uplighting inside to make this sort of a small jewel box without an extraordinary amount of exterior lighting as well. I think that's it as far as the architectural expression. What I'd like to say is that any project such as this, I'm simply one voice, and I think Daryl alluded to our extraordinary team, it's been an incredible collaboration of very qualified and dedicated and talented professionals. This is just the beginning.
If I could, Mr. Prell, Mr. Cohen, I had originally thought that we would let all of your people speak before we went to the public input, but at the rate we're going, it's going to be very, very late before everybody has spoken. Most of the input we have gotten from the public has been regarding the architecture, so once the commission has asked questions of Mr. Prell, would you be okay with us opening it for public comment on the architecture itself, on the design, and not having the rest of the speakers finish?
Sure.
They can't hear you, you know, it's all being recorded where it's a public hearing. Sorry, I didn't mean to do, make you stand up.
I said that's fine with us, as long as we have an opportunity to conclude our-
Oh, yeah, no, we're not gonna-
Presentation after the Q and A.
We won't go anywhere.
So neither will we.
Yeah, but I just, I think there are people in the public who may only want to focus on the architecture and, okay. So, so Mr. Prell, what we're gonna do is the commission's gonna make some comments, I would expect, and then we'll open it up for public comment, and for those of you that are primarily interested in the architecture, and if you're interested in the rest, you're welcome, but I, my, our sense from the emails we've gotten is that there's very strong interest in the architecture. Commissioners, any comments?
Just briefly, I just wanted to make some comments. I thought that there are a lot of, very, there's a lot of very good thinking that's going behind this, and I really appreciate, I think we all do, and I'm hoping that you even go a little bit further as far as circulating with pedestrians and vehicular traffic. I hope you can do more, specifically drop-off. I think that there can be a lot more to organize that and create more space in front of the station on railroad.
On railroad?
Yes. And I think that, I appreciate all the ideas about creating a hub and organizing different venues, retail, transportation, and other uses, movie theater, but I would encourage you to consider other configurations that might increase the, or maybe more centralize the pedestrian activity into one central hub. I mean, right now, you've kind of created a park and this rather spectacular, spectacularly large urban space. And if there was a way to create a joint, a space that joins all of these things so that the pedestrian traffic is more concentrated, I was thinking that that could be a very good idea about just organizing it as a, making it more central and giving the, you know, this part of town a real knuckle to move around. Now that, but apart from that, what you've done as far as I'm concerned, works very well, I just think that you've created a very good urban solution to these problems, and I would love to see a little bit more detail that makes it a little bit more about our town. I appreciate all the idea, the ideas that you have put forth, but I know this is very early in the-
Correct.
Design project.
Very true. That's why we're here, is to-
Right.
Receive these very sorts of comments.
I appreciate the direction you're going.
Okay, thank you.
I think it's very good. And as far as the Metro North is concerned-
Mm-hmm.
-the platform itself isn't very attractive.
Right.
And I don't know what kind of relationship you have with Metro North, but it'd be wonderful if you could incorporate ideas that, that could be put forth to them for their consideration and maybe get some real input there so that they could upgrade the platform. We have reader boards which sometimes work, it's taken them years for them to work, and the technology is antiquated, and the information is not very useful.
Right.
I have more information on my phone, and the canopy, as you said-
Yes.
-I think are quite dated and in need of great repair and thought about how they-
We, we-
Yeah, I can give you a quick thought on that Metro North ConDOT or in a program where they're redoing platforms and canopies at different stations, and you get put on a list, and we're talking with them about ways of moving up on the list, particularly for doing the construction anyway on the rest of the, of the station. And as you know, when you start making one area look pretty good, it gets a little embarrassing for the people who have the, the other part, and we're hoping that with Department of Transportation, the focus on rail, and perhaps a friendly governor who lives in our town, that maybe we can get this moved up on our list so that the canopies and the platforms can be done as part of the, part of the project. So you're, you're right on point on that.
And obviously, because you're redoing it, there would be, the location of things may not make that much sense.
Exactly. They could relook at, they could re, they could relook at the platforms, at the canopy, and that's, that's something, we've been talking with them about that.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mr. Prell, could you-
Mr. Prell, could you bring the slide up of the station itself? One more for you, that's great.
Yes.
Kind of struck on the fact that something we're talking about, actually trying to find the entrance.
You cannot hear, sorry. There's so much.
I'm sorry. You, you don't shout out here. If you have a comment, you go up to staff, Katie's right there, and you let her know. Thank you.
Doors to the station.
Yes.
They are where they're always have been. I was kind of struck by the fact that I actually have to go into the station to go into the theater.
Mm-hmm.
Which would be a little confusing to me, because I'm not going to the platform, I'm going to the theater, but there's nothing at the street. It's kind of strange, and I think actually something that we didn't address here was actually the theater building itself, and how it progresses down the street, on top of the garage.
That's correct, yes.
To the end of the block. It's almost as high as the station itself, a lot less detailed. You do have the, the vertical fenestration as it moves down.
Correct.
But the back of that building as well.
Will be on the side of the platforms, yes.
Yeah, but that's actually a face of Greenwich as well.
Mm-hmm.
I think that really needs to be looked at and addressed.
Yes, we'll have similar articulation on the other side.
I was also struck by the fact that actually, the station itself is very, very tall.
Mm-hmm.
Almost the effect, and actually looking at all of the sections here, it's almost another story and a half taller than just the people who are passing through and occupying it. And I found that fact actually kind of strange here for Greenwich, as this is a, our station, but now we're creating this very large grand central lobby for our, our small-town train station. It glows at night. You have lots of light inside, but it would seem to me, actually understanding that the, how the sun passes, that it would almost be better, you've got glass on one side, it would almost be better to have skylights to bring the light down into it, as opposed to the north light. There are a lot of other little details and things. I think actually, in this rendering is a good example, you have a new street tree here that looks, it's grown up tall against the building. I think actually that's one of the things, maybe about the understanding what's gonna happen in the future, where in 50 years, the tree grows up. You had a slide here that showed actually the new, the street trees that are there have grown up on the side of the building. And how does that work, and how does that, any kind of interference long-term? But I was wondering, was there any thought as, as to reducing the height of the building, the, the station itself, and giving its street presence a little bit more snaps to say, yes, this is the entrance to the station? Excuse me, actually even better, it's not, it's the entrance to the platforms.
Right.
Because there's nothing, as you said, there's, it's all automated now.
Yep.
You're passing through from here to the, to the platform.
Right.
And when you get into the interior, I see the entrance to the theater, which is a little odd to me. I see entrances to other spaces, and then the elevator is kind of tucked away in a small space in one area.
Mm-hmm.
Thought maybe because this is such a gathering place, and actually maybe celebrating the, the elevators themselves, so rather than tucked away as an afterthought, it's actually centered to the lobby, because you're going up, up to the platform.
Mm-hmm.
Have to go up to the, to the theater as well, so. The, I don't want to get into the weeds here, but I think actually, understanding the whole scope, all of the lighting, all of the signage, everything that's gonna be happening here needs to be addressed. And I think actually, one thing that Mr. Levy had brought up the other, at our briefing, was talking about why the station needs to be in the center.
Mm-hmm.
And could it be actually near the public park?
Mm-hmm.
So you can pass through the park and pass through the station to the platform. It was kind of an interesting idea, because then, you know, as a welcoming space, you're actually having that transition from street, the procession, the street to the park, to the station itself. Now, your thoughts around the brick, that hasn't been decided, but has it been informed? You see, you were seeing other brick that was in town, the YMCA.
Yes, we've looked at samples and numbers of buildings, and we're just at this point, we have received various samples. We just have a representative depiction at this point, but that whole process is still to be exhaustively studied.
And your work on the, the restoration hardware, the buildings that are surrounded. What I'm seeing here is kind of a very contemporary detailing.
Mm-hmm.
Was there any thought as to trying to bring in some more traditional detailing, keeping in the, the perceived character of Greenwich, the small-town New England field, that kind of thing?
We thought about it, and it has always been part of our consideration. We think that there is a way to use those materials, though, in a way that is a little bit more contemporary. I mean, traditional can be interpreted in a number of different ways, because there's a number of buildings that look alike or from a particular period, that lends to a kind of a definition, but maybe it's a simplistic definition. We think that there's an opportunity to use those materials in a more modern way, a way that speaks to sustainability, a way that looks to, you know, being able to be more energy efficient, to having the glass, the, the green roofs and so forth. But a simple expression of, and an intelligent use of the brick, we think, and the zinc and the metals, can also have a very, it's traditional, but it's a slightly different interpretation of that term.
I, I just would like to put forth the idea that, although I agree with you, scale is, is a fundamental idea here.
Absolutely.
That I don't see in the cinema building. The scale of it is, does not represent something that I see, that, that seems to be something that I equate with Greenwich. I equate that with other towns that have larger box buildings, and in that regard, I would like to see you do some, do some work with that. That, that building would serve well to be either lower, set back, used, screened, whatever, to, to try to capture a much more elegant idea about our town. And height doesn't serve it well.
Bill, can we go back to the overall, please?
So. As in the old design, you've created the same thing on the other side. And so I, I think that, I would love to see you do a little work on figuring that out, and also from, as Mr. McCray said, about the other side of the train tracks.
Mm-hmm.
That would be a, a good task to figure out how that should look.
It, it will be similar. I will say, just to take a step back, that what you see here has been the product of an exhaustive planning study, and an analysis of all the component parts, and where it made the most sense to locate them. There's also a response to FAR, to zoning allowances. My understanding is that the, the movie building does not exceed at this point. I mean, it's, it's within its allowable height at this point, so.
That's correct.
What we've done is to try to acknowledge that.
Forty feet is the max allowed in, in the zone, and that's what the movie theater is proposed at.
That's, that's right.
The station is proposed at 50.
That's right.
But my point is, my, my comment is about the massing and the scale.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
I don't think that fits your idea that you put forth.
Mm-hmm.
That you're trying to, that you think that there's a, you know, a, a nice kind of reserved elegance about some of the architecture, especially on Greenwich Avenue.
Right.
That existed there. I don't think that that reflects your idea.
Okay.
And I do think that, I appreciate the glass box idea. I, I hope that you can work on that, and I think that you can come up, I'm hoping that you can come up with something which is integrating these large public spaces and pooling them better, so that you don't have different things going on, and bifurcating the opportunity to bring people together in, in a much more strategic way, to create a much more centralized idea about this site.
Okay. That's, that's a very interesting idea. I'd like to respond only by saying that there was a very intentional reason for the location of the station. Again, it's at the high point of Railroad Avenue. It's, again, we, we use this concept of a keystone, it's sort of the center of the programmatic arrangement of all of the component parts. It's, it's centered on the platform, on the, it's the center of the station itself. So, you know, if you access the platforms from this building, you're, you have the choice to go, you know, to the back of the train or the front of the train, depending on where you get off, but that's an equal distance. So, you know, the, the actual, like, it's, it's in the location where the station has always been, you know, the one before it and the one before that, the original one that was, that the Ashforth's purchased in the 19, late 1960s.
Does it really need to stay in the center? I mean, Grand Central Station, your train goes to the end, and you walk down to the platform, and if you want to get to the far end, you walk to the far end of the platform.
Um, yeah, but now they have the entrances from the north side for that very reason.
I'm not sure that, well, it's to be discussed, obviously.
It's something to be thought about.
Absolutely.
How about comments from the other commissioners?
I just wanted a comment that I'm not, my comments have nothing to do with where it is. You can be in the center, but I do think that you do have to really think more about drop-off, because that happens, and that will always happen.
Yes.
And it's a mess right now, and just not to do anything about that is unfortunate.
Well, I think we do. John, John Canning will speak to some very specific improvements that we've made that work in concert with the street.
And the idea of creating more of a, a procession up to the tracks is a very elegant idea, and you've kept things kind of the way they are, and there might be an opportunity to push that structure back a little bit and create more of an open area, so that, that receiving can seem more like the entrance to something. So I just think there's a lot of things that you will hopefully explore, and I think you're going in the right direction.
Well, that's helpful. I mean, these are very helpful comments.
Just want to talk about these things.
Thank you. We certainly will.
Other commissioners?
I have one more question. South, the south side?
Yes, sir.
We refer testimony that the ridership is actually increasing both coming and going. It seems that the south side has gotten, gotten bigger.
No, it doesn't.
Here, okay, but.
The station.
It, it doesn't exist. Yeah, it's a new building.
It doesn't exist.
It's a new building.
When you say bigger, it doesn't exist.
It doesn't exist, so.
Five hundred square feet is what, all it is.
Good question.
Yeah.
What's gonna be constructed is 554 square feet.
Where did the taxi office go?
It's no longer there.
They're not gonna have one.
Yeah, that'll be addressed, either there'll be an off-site solution for that, or they will, you know, most of the trends in drop-off pickup are going more towards app-related, you know, Lyft or Uber, so there will be a, we won't need the physical sort of brick-and-mortar presence of the taxi stand any longer.
The issue, however, and I don't think you're the right person to address this to, what's gonna happen, that's a circulation question. We're gonna wait till we get to Mr. Canning. Do I have any more architecture comments? Okay, Peter.
Yeah.
After that goes Peter Lowe, who's tried twice.
Go ahead, David.
No, please.
Go ahead.
I have a much better understanding of what you're trying to achieve with the stations You know, my concern is really about how you dress up the warehouse look.
Okay.
Of the theater building, how you might improve the facades of, of retail. It looks like there's a lot of glass, but you mentioned formal elegance in your analysis of what makes Greenwich, Greenwich, and I don't see much of that outside of the station itself. I mean, the station and its form and the light is one discussion, and I think we've covered that in great detail. But I think your challenge will be to work on, on the other buildings, because I, I think we've had a great opportunity, as we talked about in the briefing this morning, to create something that 50 years from now, we're saying, gee, did a good job 50 years ago. I mean, today, you know, the existing cinema looks like, you know, a blockhouse.
Right.
So I think your challenge is really, where do you capture that formal elegance? And it doesn't have to be cookie cutter from what you see everywhere on Greenwich Avenue. There's a lot of variety there, but I just don't see that on either side of the station.
There's an opportunity to break down the mass. We've done a few gestures, I think you can see, Bill, if you go back, breaking up the facade, you know, with fenestration, with lighting that can be illuminated. We can, you know, there's sort of a horizontality to it that we can use to break down this concern that the, of the, of the height. The parking below will be open, that's actually a precast concrete system, which is 50% open, so that we can have ventilation for the parking below, but we will also incorporate a vine, a, a green vine system that will allow a growth that will actually come up like a vine that will enclose the building as well, which will give it a softer kind of Greenwich look as well. But there are ways that we can certainly look at that.
Mr. Lowe?
You mentioned, you alluded to the buildings in Greenwich and described their function and purpose, and it was less about ornamentation.
Yes.
And we can argue how you define ornamentation, but when I look at that box that has an, an extra, I think, 10 feet above the current regulations, I, my question is, why that high? And I believe you said it needs to be able to express itself. And I like that phrase, but I have no idea what it means.
Okay. All right.
So I, I think.
Four-year-old.
I think some people are struggling with, and this, the applicants are gonna have to struggle with justifying the height of that building to the extent that there is any kind of objection to it, and if you could possibly address yourself to that. The other thing, when we move the movie theater down there in place of the parking lot, you, and, you know, I recognize there are trade-offs in various design features, but you eliminate the view from the platform, looking back up this way, which you can look up Arch Street and back up to Town Hall, and, and suddenly that's blocked over by the movie theater cement blocks.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Just, just comments, and if you could address yourself particularly to the rationale for the extra height of this center.
Sure. When I say express itself, I mean to have presence. We think it's the most important building of the composition. Clearly, we probably have spent the most creative energy, and, you know, drawing from the inspiration I mentioned a moment ago. We think because it will be the signature building which identifies the project, and also we hope that it will become a civic center. You know, this is how we define it in terms of its multipurpose use. So the extra height, we think will just give it extra significance. You know, it will define it as the most important building in this composition of other programmatic uses adjacent to it, a theater, retail, park, parking beneath. Clearly, this is the most important building, the one that defines the redevelopment. So we think, for those reasons, it, it justifies a, a more important presence, you know, a greater, and we don't, you know, to stand there, I mean, I think we can certainly do studies that will, that will explore it. It's not out of scale with the other buildings around it, we don't think, where there's a, there's a kind of a, a commercial quality and nature to the street there. There's the car dealerships, there is an office building, you know, on the other side, on, on the north side, of a similar height, a very, very similar height. So we don't think that it really will be completely out of scale, or will speak to itself, or be arrogant in a way. We think that it will in fact be one of a company, you know, one of, consistent with the other buildings in that area. We also don't think it will block any views. We've made it as transparent as possible. We didn't want it to be imposing. We looked at opportunities, we looked at other, you know, studies where it was closed. We even looked at skylights from above, but we didn't think that it responded to the sun, we didn't think that it was as transparent or as spacious as it could be, and it's, as we've tried to define it as such. So, yes, we're asking. So, yes, we're asking for a little extra height, but we think that it's justified because it gives the building the meaning that we think, or it contributes to what we hope the building will mean.
Ms. Pratt?
My concern, you just said that you didn't want the building, you didn't think the building, the train station would be too imposing. And my concern, which I did mention earlier, is that some, in the past, there have been comments about the imposing light that comes out of the Apple Store at night and the imposing light that comes out of the Chase Bank near the library. And I, and I seeing the food market that has the possible food market with a lot of light and the station with a lot of light, will the light be imposing?
No. As I mentioned before, light is as carefully designed, as controlled as any of the architectural elements. We will work with a lighting designer. We've sign of anticipated those kinds of concerns. The light will be completely internal, will be reflective, will not be direct in any way. In other words, it won't be shining from the inside to the outside. So, what our goal will be is for these elements that are illuminated to glow so that the light will be kept within. Because we're very sensitive. We've had other, you know, we've had concerns in other design projects where the light cannot come to the outside, cannot illuminate the night sky, cannot flood or go into anyone else's, you know, windows across the street. So, it will, it will all be very carefully controlled and kept within.
Okay. Mr. Pratt, do you have the architectural drawings on slides?
Yes, we do.
Can you bring up a drawing eight two oh one?
Sure. There you go. One more. There you go.
So, the central station is only about 10 feet taller than the theater building?
That's correct. It goes to 50 feet. Right. And the theater is at 40, which is within the allowable maximum height.
So, that's why they do that change to six two oh five? Because that gives them the 25% extra on the height, which is 10 feet.
Because I think, one of the things that really wasn't well represented in the renderings was actually the theater side of the building itself. I think coming up on, as you pass by the building on Railroad Avenue in other direction, I'm not too sure if that thought of its extra height giving it significance because I would think that actually most people wouldn't perceive the height as they're moving past it. It would seem that you'd have the center building of glass, but you'd still have that, that wall of building as you pass down Railroad Avenue in both directions. I just wanted to make a point of that or note of that. Do you have renderings of the, of the theater side of the building?
No, we don't have those developed yet, no.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So, with that, if nobody on the commission has any more questions, we're going to open it to the public for comment, but if you would just keep your comments to the architecture and if you've got comments on other stuff, stay tuned because we're going to talk about a whole bunch of other things, traffic, I forgot, oh.
Actually, just something I've noticed. Actually, we were talking about the height of the building. What did you say it was?
What?
The height of the building.
The theater is, is 40, the station is 50. The text amendment six two oh five proposes that they be able to do 25% extra height for transit.
That's what I'm looking for. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, public, first hand up. Do we need a sign-up sheet, Katie?
No, but I think if, if people could kind of queue up and get ready to come up behind.
I'm going to just ask everybody, one thing, try to keep your comments brief, try to stay to three minutes. You've got the timer.
Sure. I'll try.
Huh? I'll try. Yeah, I'm going to say that, don't worry. Okay, so, my commission always wants me to say all these things. Okay, so, because it's 9:30 right now and we've got a long way to go still, be brief. And if somebody else has made your point, you don't need to come up and tell us. You could just say, they've already made my point, but don't make it again, okay? Just tell us so that we can do this efficiently. I can't say this to lawyers, unfortunately.
I was married to one, but I'm not.
I hope you told, no.
I did.
Please, go ahead.
Always be short.
And would you identify yourself for the record?
My name is Mary Hull. I have been, I didn't do it.
No, you can't get too close, I think. There you go. There you're good.
I have been the director of Greenwich Green and Clean for over 30 years and I spent hours and hours and hours on the downtown portion of the plan of conservation and development that we are currently replacing. So, a lot of this is very familiar. We're a city who wants to be a village. Unfortunately, if you took a poll of the residents tomorrow, probably 90% of them would say, could you just lower the station part? I think they will have a problem with it because it doesn't have to stand out and be the most important part. It just has to be a cohesive unit. But my other point is, I'm thrilled to pieces that the Ashforth Group will not receive a penny from creating green space. That park will help put the waterfront and downtown Greenwich together so that we can utilize them and the Bruce Museum is doing more. And we will try to get lights under that bridge because nobody will touch them at somebody else's job always, but I'm determined to get lights under there and be able to walk. The greenery, I have to tell you, 26 or 7 years ago, when you entered Greenwich from Stanford, the weeds on exit three adjacent to the garage were yea high. They were horrible and the rat problem was huge. They were bigger than dogs. And I somehow or other, Greenwich Green and Clean convinced the DOT to clear it. And since then, thank you, Ashforth Properties. You have kept the grass cut, you have kept it clean. Their record of creating green to make the architecture look better, the architecture ain't gorgeous, but the plantings have been fabulous. And I am very, very concerned with being able now to put trees and greenery adjacent to the platform. I failed before. It's going to happen. We're going to put more green, not only in the station, but around it. But thank you, Ashforth's.
Thank you very much. Hi. And if you would identify yourself for the record.
Hello, Dan Quigley from District One. Excuse me, got a frog in my throat. As someone who lives in District One off West Elm Street and has for 18 years, grew up off Lake Avenue, have seen Greenwich from different perspectives. I've seen it from the mid-country perspective where downtown is sort of this transient area. And now I've been in downtown where I realize it's actually a community that functions totally differently if you don't live there. This is something that my wife and I have been talking about for years. When are we going to get a new train station? How do we do it? How much is it going to cost? I think we're presented with an opportunity here that we've really got to make sure we don't mess up because we have the Ashforth Group here who's willing to put the risk into this on behalf of their own interests, but also in the interest of the town. And we're being given an opportunity to have something that other towns do not have the resources to have and our town would not be able to do if it was a public project. There are other issues involved, I know, but in terms of aesthetics, when you come to Greenwich, you expect a certain standard. We don't have it now. And I, I think that for the most part, the architecture here gives us something that's kind of unparalleled. And as the gateway to Connecticut from New York, the best town in Connecticut on the Gold Coast, in my opinion, by far, we deserve something a little bit better than other communities probably have. They can argue it. Greenwich should have the best train station in the state. When you come into the state, you should know you're at the nicest station. I think this accomplishes a lot of that. You guys can obviously hash out the issues with the cinema, but I want to urge the P and Z board to not let the trees obscure the forest. This is a great opportunity. Don't fine-tune this too much. Do not get involved in the minutia of, this is four feet too high, this is going to be drop-dead awesome when it's done, if we can get this done. And as I said before, there's other issues involved. They can get worked through. The town will work through with the Ashforth Group. The one question I have and then a point I want to make is, the only thing I didn't see elementally in the design of the glass cube is a place where people can, can sit and use their laptops and their iPads. This is not supposed to be a transport hub where you kind of just walk through it. That's what it is now. No one wants to go in Greenwich train station. It's gross. You walk through it to the train, you come out, the entrance, that's it. This is a place, I think, where people actually will be a destination. I would take, I'd get there 30 minutes early just to grab a bite to eat, sit down, answer emails, look at the internet. And I, the only thing I don't see is maybe a place where people can do that. So, if maybe you guys can mull that over, that would be interesting. Secondly, I heard a comment before about obscuring the view of the train, of the town when you come in. I commuted for 15 years from Lower Manhattan. Every time I got to Greenwich, the only thing I see is Rolls-Royce Bentley Lexus. That is not the optic that you want when people get to Greenwich. That's the optic we kind of want to avoid, right? This is the super rich town with the Rolls-Royce dealerships. That's what you see when you come in on a train, Rolls-Royce Bentley Greenwich Motors Lexus. If something can block that out, I think it's actually an asset and not a negative. So, good luck to you guys. Thank you for all your hard work. Thank you, Daryl and the Ashforth Group. Awesome.
Thank you, Mr. Pratt. Mr. Quigley, thank you. Ms. Pratt?
Hi, Joan Stewart Pratt, also District One. My question, I have a question and a comment. My question is, do you think all the existing trees on Railroad Avenue are going to be cut down? I can't imagine Mr. Melkin approving that. And I, hoping, I know there are some analogies made to the train station, which is absolutely fabulous design and I like it. I've been commuting since 1983 and lived in Greenwich for 52 years. I would like to see if you could keep the trees, if there's any way of keeping our existing trees and making the sidewalk not as wide and maybe some more greenery on the sidewalk, like parts of Greenwich Avenue have grass on the sidewalk. I'd like to see less concrete. I like the park a lot. I was hoping for a little bit more greenery, more grass. And with respect to the building, and I would like to get the answer about the, the trees, but my, my other comment...
We'll work on the trees for you, okay?
Perfect.
Okay.
That within the building, to Dan's point, having seating, I, and I, someone who, I'm a three-year, I'm someone who needs a three-year-old to show me how to use my phone. I would like to see train schedules and at least, like, it's the Stanford Station, how they're up on the board where you can see what the trains are. If there's not going to be people in there, I'd like to see people, but if that's not going to happen, we definitely need train schedules and have them refilled. And I was just wondering, with the height of the building, is there any ability in your design that you could somehow create maybe a center platform or something where you could go up or on the, the south side, like a balcony, where you could go up and actually see the water view? I think that would be a really cool thing to be able to see, if you could create something like in the middle.
I swear, I do know her from the Junior League, but I did not give her the idea. I said the same thing this morning.
Oh, did you really? And speaking of the Junior League, that's funny, I'm an active Junior League member. I'd be curious to know within the, hopefully within the main train station, I understand it's a passageway to get to the food court and the theater. I think it would be a wonderful idea if there was a wall or a section of a wall that could be attributed to local stuff going on in Greenwich, such as Junior League events that we might want to promote something, or the Bruce Museum wants to promote something, or United Way wants to, we have so many wonderful organizations in town.
Thank you, Ms. Pratt.
Thank you.
Sir? If you would identify yourself?
Yes, Jean-Pierre Gagné, also District One. And I really appreciate the time to be able to speak to the board and of course, the applicant here, I think he's done a very nice job and he's got a great, great team. The architect has done a wonderful, wonderful work as well. I do want to comment on the height of the building. I think it's appropriate, in my opinion. I have an engineering and a planning background and I am the developer. So, I just want to disclose that so that, my thoughts are, it's a great plan. I think it needs more work in terms of the master plan itself. I think the circulation and the pedestrian access needs work also. I think escalators should be considered. There is an aging population, as we all know, and having the stairs that are there today now certainly don't work. They don't function well. They don't serve the elderly populations that we're all moving into. And I thought that the icon concept and the gateway, if you will, to Greenwich is a very important planning tool. And I think it does need to be celebrated and emphasized as you have arrived to Greenwich. And we are a very distinctive town and we deserve to really have a distinctive element and a piece of architecture that we can be proud of for years to come. If we're planning this for 50 years, I think you make no small plan. I want to encourage the board to realize that this is a very important opportunity and I don't want it to be missed. You have this applicant willing to pay 47 or bring in $47 million to improve the area. I still think though, when I do the per foot, per square foot prices, with all due respect, that's, let's see, you said 25,000 square foot, the theater? And you probably have another 20,000 square foot of retail space?
Mr. Gagné, they can't answer your question.
That's about a thousand.
That you can only address us when you're speaking.
Oh, I'm sorry. But I do think even more should be spent and I encourage the board to be bold here and not nickel and dime the developer over 10 feet. I think it does need to be high and it is consistent with the fabric of Greenwich Avenue in downtown. And this is really the anchor. It is the anchor. It's the bottom of the avenue. I agree with Mr. Levy that the circulation and drop-off needs work. And again, the pedestrian access going, moving up and down needs a lot more thinking. The park, does that want to be on an anchor, on a corner or not? We don't know that. I think that that might want to be looked at a little bit deeper as a planning solution. So, I'm not quite sure about that. That's where it wants to be. Finally, with respect to the architecture, here's the thing about cinemas and theaters. They turn their back on a community. They're completely internal. There are no windows, there's no street appeal, it's just a brick wall. It's very unattractive and it's not safe at night. And I think there should be more thought to that as well. And maybe the good board has the sense to say, maybe we need to be flexible on the FAR requirements here. It is on top of the train station, it doesn't need more parking. So, maybe an increase in FAR in exchange for more money being spent downtown should be considered by the board. Why not? This is the one in a lifetime opportunity. None of the board members sitting up here today will be here 50 years, I presume. Maybe Katie might.
I hope so.
She's probably the only one. So, I do want to emphasize to the board, please be flexible. Understand that this is a unique opportunity. We should not have a theater on the first level, it should be the second story, give them more height, put retail down. Look at what's going down towards Railroad Avenue. It's a brick wall. Go to Portchester, it's there. What a mistake they made on the water to put a theater in a downtown destination. What were they thinking? I encourage you, the board, have courage. Do not allow a theater on a ground floor, period. Give them another height, give them more FAR, he'll be happy to take it and let him dump more money into downtown Greenwich and make it a better place to be. It will be a fantastic hub, transportation hub. Give him more FAR, let him be more creative, have his architect go to work and improve the streetscape because it's not working, in my opinion. Thank you so much for your time.
Mr. Gagné, the theater's on the second floor. The theater is on the second floor.
It's a brick wall at grade and all you're looking at is a brick wall. There's no people fabric, there's no street appeal.
Yeah, I think we pointed that out before.
So, the curb appeal is very critical and important.
Thank you very much.
I think, I think those were good comments.
Thank you.
I think those were good comments.
Sir, if you would identify yourself.
Dean Gamanos, District Seven. Thank you, by the way, for putting this together. Great opportunity, and I want to echo the sentiment that a project this important should receive a lot of attention. I think a lot of great work has been done, a very impressive presentation, some, thank you for sharing the research with us. I do have a couple of comments on the architecture, and I think there's some brilliant strokes here, some of it a bit futuristic, but my main concern is, it's a little disparate. The, you know, I'm not in favor of what's there now, but it does have a certain unity to it. And here I see a mammoth brick theater on the right. I see a glass cube in the middle, which is not at all of the same elements to the right. And then the string of stores at different level altogether. It just, I think, needs a little more balance and unity. And I think there were some drawings by the architect of the town, the aerial view of the town, and, you know, unity with what's up on, where the new store is, where the old post office was, and the historic buildings around there. I don't sense a connection to the rest of the town. There was talk about the theater, which looks very large, and I, you know, if we could support that theater, fine, but it does, I think, look like a big block to the side of the station, and maybe it could be scaled down a little bit. Frankly, I went to the Majestic Theater in Stanford where they had these super soft lounge chairs. I sank into it. I said, this is, this is just too much for me. Maybe the millennials like those movie theater chairs, but they're not for me, and maybe a little more research could go into whether we need that kind of work here. But a good first step, I think we should keep, keep the project going. Look at some alternatives, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Gamanos.
Good evening. My name is Renee Ketchum, and I'd like to speak with two hats onto a couple of architectural points. I am president of the Alliance Française of Greenwich that started 16 years ago, focused on French cinema, which has been in Greenwich for the past five years. We bring 6,000 people to a five-day festival, three of which are celebrated at Boitei Cinemas. I've worked very, very closely with Boitei. It's an extraordinary festival of newly released films that brings a very international Franco-Fun community to an already international community. Focus on French cinema has made Greenwich a destination for some of the best films, the newest films never before seen in the United States. So I'm thrilled with this incredible effort, and I'm embracing, celebrating what the Ashforce have come up with in terms of this design. Greenwich needs a movie theater. It needs a movie theater that is modern, where you can sit in these big chairs, you can watch the films. I see 150 films a year with a selection committee. You can enjoy the best of French language cinema, have a glass of wine, mingle with your friends. I think it's fabulous. I especially like the access from the train station. With Greenwich being the gateway to New England, the gateway to this incredible international community that is Greenwich, how wonderful is it that you get off the train, you walk into Boitei, and there you are in France, or Haiti, or north, or any Franco-Fun country. I'm thrilled with the design. I'm just, to me, any town that doesn't have a very active cinema is a very, very sad place. And this new cinema will allow not only us, but I see Ginger Stickle in back of me talking about GIF, to celebrate the best of all film from around the world, to have ongoing cinema throughout, bring people together in the town of Greenwich. Thank you very much to the Ashforce and to this committee and to everyone who spoke tonight. I think it's brilliant. Secondly, I've lived in Greenwich for 40 years. I am the parent of millennials, one of whom is just moving out to this area. To seize this kind of design, this new kind of innovation that is going to bring young people out from New York, have them buying real estate in Greenwich is, to me, fabulous. So thank you to everyone, but especially thank you to the Ashforce and the designers, architects, for this really innovative design. I really celebrate it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. I'm Ginger Stickle, and I am the executive director of Greenwich International Film Festival, as well as a resident of Greenwich. And first, I'd just like to say thank you to the Ashforce and to the town of Greenwich for your consideration for this project. I've lived in Greenwich almost 15 years, and my husband commutes to the city five days a week. My children and I go into the city quite often on the weekends using the train. And frankly, Greenwich Plaza, it's the first impression many people have coming and leaving Greenwich. So I think the modernization of that building and structure is incredibly important for Greenwich going forward. As the executive director of GIF, as we call the film festival, I'm here to speak in support of this project from the founders and our major supporters of the film festival. Just a little background, we've hosted a world-class film festival in Greenwich for the past five years. We attract about 10,000 people through film premieres, educational panels, speaking events, networking receptions, and it's created a tremendous amount of benefit for the town of Greenwich. 1.5 billion positive media impressions with coverage in all kinds of news outlets, many of which talk to the importance of having a film festival and an active arts and cultural community in Greenwich as a reason to come to Greenwich, to live in Greenwich. And we survey our audience every year after our festival, and every year we get negative feedback about the theater because it is not state-of-the-art. It is, you know, as they mentioned earlier, there haven't been as many improvements done to it because truly, the plans they've outlined would be amazing to enrich the experience, offer more of a luxury experience viewing the films. We attract many distinguished speakers and filmmakers. Boitei Theater is the only theater in Greenwich that offers DCP capability, which you need to screen these high-quality films. Greenwich International Film Festival has partnered with a number of organizations that have benefited from the theater and would tremendously benefit from the new plans. We've hosted fundraisers for them, special screening events. We've partnered with the YWCA of Greenwich, the Breast Cancer Alliance, with the Alzheimer's Association of Connecticut, the Boys and Girls Club of Greenwich, and many other organizations. And all of, all of these events have taken place in the theater. So I realize, you know, it may not be the most attractive side of the building, but it's a very important piece, and you really cannot scale it down. You know, to have a theater and a civic space like this, it, I do feel like the plans are very thoughtful and considerate of it. So anyway, we are very much in support of this, and I'm happy to speak offline or answer any questions, but thank you to everyone who's been involved in this project.
Thank you very much.
Wow.
Sorry. My name is Ernst Schirmer, Coscomp, District Eight. I want to first thank the PNC Commission. I know you do lots of work and so much, and it's not often really recognized, so thank you for everything you do. I highly obviously commend the applicant. It's the type of economic activity and development that's so badly needed in town, and I think it's a bit an exceptional one. Therefore, I would also ask the PNC, you know, to really try to wear a very supportive hat. What I'm missing architecturally about this whole thing so far is, usually when I go to a major train station, and I've been to train stations on three continents, the first thing is, where am I? Where is my guest tourist information? Where is my special assistance if I got a problem? Where would I go? I think we need to change our frame of thinking here. This is not a cattle transportation into Manhattan and out. This is a no-hold area where this is kind of where the community gathers, where things are happening. This is not quick transit in and out. I would encourage the architect to look around again. You didn't really have a lot of Greenwich people in your pictures. I was missing people that carry luggage. I was missing strollers, families. We have lots of pets in town. I was missing people, you know, finding lockers. For instance, if we have out-of-town guests, one of the things that's so badly needed at any train station is, where can I safely deposit my luggage if I want to take a stroll along the avenue, or if I want to, you know, take advantage of the beautiful sights and so on? I would encourage more interaction, cooperation with like CTA, the bus, if I need to go to Greenwich Hospital, if I'm going to take the Captain Island ferry. So let's please work together. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Schirmer.
Hi, friends. Good to see you again. I'm Suzanne Leo. I'm managing director of the Bruce Museum. Our name has been mentioned more than once in this presentation, and so I thought it would be of me to come up here and address you directly about these plans. As the spotty well knows, the Bruce Museum is expanding. We are doing that with this view that the new Bruce project would be an opportunity to develop downtown Greenwich as sort of a cultural center. I think that's been touched on a little bit, but it's important to recognize that we see the proposed rail station as an opportunity to really support our vision by providing the connectivity and, for lack of a better term, kinetic energy that will help bring people down the avenue. We talked about that a little bit, but for the Bruce Museum, that's a really pivotal idea. You start at the top of the avenue with its very vibrant galleries. You get about halfway down to the Greenwich Arts Council, sort of a, a sort of an intermediary space that provides a lot of arts programming. The new rail station would then enable this sort of opening up to the Bruce Museum, which is currently interrupted, as we've mentioned, by the aging train station, the railroad trestle that's really sort of unattractive, the dark I-95 overpass. And Katie, good job on getting information on how to do a public art project in that space. I know that's something that you and I talked about for six years. So let's get it done in our lifetime. I like it. This project's proposed park and pedestrian friendly environment, the park again was referenced at the corner of Steamboat and Railroad. That, that sort of environment would help connect these seemingly disparate sections of town. It would unify them. And it would really sort of grant access to the Bruce Museum, which feels so separate from the rest of downtown Greenwich right now. The new station will draw visitors to the Bruce Museum as well. We see this as an opportunity to put up some new signage, some much-needed signage, to train passengers, new directional signage that alerts potential visitors to our location, sort of incite some wonder, what is this Bruce Museum for new visitors? And to provide easier access to the museum. Over a third of our employees take the train every day, and many of our visitors come via train. I don't have specifics, but I'm happy to get them for you. I think it's really unique and commendable that the Ashforth Group is working to integrate the new Bruce plans with the station plans to develop a shared vision. And I don't know that that's ever really been done here before to this extent, to have a public-private partnership, work with another public-private partnership to create a unified vision, and that's something that's really unique. And I think, as I said, should be noted and is commendable. So I think to echo what a gentleman from District One said, Greenwich is really a world-class community, and it deserves world-class amenities. And the Bruce Museum is really excited to support this project and work cooperatively on it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Sure.
My name is James Rittman. Growing up in town, people knew me as Jimmy, so I've got to go by both. So you want just to talk about the architecture?
That was the idea, but as you saw, people got off topic, and I have a feeling the next speaker is not going to necessarily be architectural.
Well, from an architectural standpoint, I would like to commend everybody who is involved with the project on the applicant's side. I think so often, there's criticism of people that come up before you, and it is clear the time and the thought and the care that has gone into this project. Somebody commented about the cost. I don't know the cost, but that sounds like an awful lot of money for a family, a developer to bring into this town. And I believe that, looking at this project, the open space, I mean, most developers wouldn't plan, come to you with a first draw with open space. And it's clear that they care about what that looks like for the town, for people that show up the town. Then the retail is beautiful. The new station is beautiful. The movie theater is thought out about what people want today in going forward for the future. So I think the architecture is incredible. If I can continue just so, as people have gone, I want to thank you all for your time because I've sat on different boards and have given time to community organizations, and I know what that does, and so thank you for your dedication, what you do for the town. Growing up in town, the town has changed. People sometimes don't want change, but I think change is inevitable, and this change is clearly good for the town. In, 17 years ago, I moved back to town and started working for a commercial real estate company, Newmark Knight Frank. And as such, we do a lot of the local real estate in the town. I would say about 60%, humbly, on the commercial side for office and retail space in town. We have given statistics, I think, advised behind the scenes for both Katie and for both Mr. Tessie about real estate. We also get to travel around the country, and we see a lot of the projects around the country and have represented a lot of the firms, a lot of retail firms mostly around the country. So we get to see a lot of the retail projects, the important ones around the country, and we examine a lot of the best towns and cities around the country. So from that standpoint, I look at this, and I can tell, because we've seen incredible projects, and you can tell when a developer really cares about something versus whether they're just looking for a return on investment. And there's, there's clear care in this, in this project. So I'd like to commend the applicants for that. You know, people like to say that Greenwich has a problem with retail. I don't think that. I think this actually will create better retail because what the retail that you have here now will extend the avenue and will create it going onto Railroad, which right now the retail on Railroad is service, but it's not, it's not terrific. This will make, and I think across the street will then improve because of what this developer is looking to do. So despite my involvement in real estate, I do not come here as, I do not profit from this. I do not work for the Ashforce. We are not working on this project. I come here as a resident. Of my 43 years on Earth, 31 have been as a resident here, and I care about this town tremendously. I'm a huge Yankees fan. I gave up Yankee tickets tonight to be here. So you could, you could say, you could say that after my parents, my wife and my kids, the town of Greenwich is number two. And so I really do think that this is an incredible project for the town. To improve the train station, the retail parking is something that should be a common goal of the town and the residents. I think every real estate development in some respect is a public and private partnership. This one clearly is. And when Mr. Harvey was talking about what the downtown was, or what train travel was in 1970, it made me, I wasn't alive, but it made me think about what, what the downtown was. And what, if you think about where more people coming into the town now, what they see today, if you look at the pictures of what is there in comparison of what they've proposed, this is now such a better way to show off Greenwich. And if you think about the big difference in what the town was, you didn't have, most of the people who lived in the town were probably commuting into New York City or commuting somewhere else. The big transformation in the downtown over those past 50 years has been the, really, this start to it was these office buildings. And it's grown the downtown and has created a very diverse business community in our, in our town, in our downtown. So now you have more people that are able to come here and more people that are able to stay here and work to give their time, as opposed to commuting in and out of the city two or three hours, to boards, to charities, to coaching their children's. So it's an amazing thing, the transformation that this development started with 50 years ago, and this, I think, continues in that. So in short, I think this is a beautiful design. I think it's a big, big win for the town of Greenwich, for the residents, and for the future. And I thank you for your time. I thank them for their time and effort into this, and I hope that you will look fondly upon this, favorably upon this application. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Tessie?
Good evening, Madam Chairman and members of the commission. I speak to you tonight really with three different perspectives. One as the town's chief elected official, and the other as a 50-year resident of the town, and also as a parent of children being raised in Greenwich. So the first perspective, as the town's chief elected official, one has to look at this in the context of the broader community. And several years ago, I gave a speech to the Chamber of Commerce on the state of the town. And in talking about what we were looking at toward the future in terms of development and having come out of the 2009 Plan of Conservation and Development, I said something to the effect of, we're not Stanford, we're not Darian, we're Greenwich. I said something to the effect of, "We're not Stanford. We're not Darian. We're Greenwich." And I believe that Greenwich is a community of neighborhoods. We pride ourselves on that fact. I spoke to that earlier today before the Historical Society, as they look for accreditation and looking at what their role is in relation to the town and its history. When we look at downtown, it is our urban area. It has, yes, residential, but it is our economic driver. And when you look at Greenwich Plaza and you look at the train station and the accompanying buildings in close proximity to 95 and the rail line, you realize that is the engine that pumps life into the community from a business and commerce point of view. So this particular current facility has met its useful life at 50 years of age. It is certainly showing the effects, and I think the proposal before you takes into consideration many design elements that are appealed to present and future generations. And I think that's something I hope you would look kindly upon, recognizing that your job is to make sure that it incorporates into the size and scale of the community, getting back to, "We're not Stanford. We're not Darian. We're Greenwich." I want to also bring you to the point about the functionality. And we were hearing from the gentleman from DOT who had metrics. One of the things, as he was speaking, that I thought of is the fact, you may be aware of, there's been a change in the use of many of our commercial office spaces. What was built in 1980, 1990, maybe 1970s accommodates far more people today than it did back then. And that's due to the change in the nature of businesses and finance, trading floors, and so forth. So when you think about trying to reconcile those data points, I'm much more of a practical person, so I just know from my campaigning for this job, I've been down on the train platform, and I see the people coming off the train. And I see younger people dressed in attire more suited to that environment of trading floors, casual, earbuds in, and they're passing to those offices across the way or up Greenwich Avenue or on the Corollary Street. So I think you have to really take into consideration through your own efforts, perhaps data, what's taking place in those buildings and FAR and the number of people. And also, James, who's here, who's on my Economic Advisory Committee, he's also shared some of this evolution with us as we talk about vacancy and who's going in and going out. So that's one element. The other is accessibility, and I'm sorry he was not able to stay, but Alan Gunsberg, who chairs the Disability Advisory Committee under our office, wanted to speak tonight about the importance of the ADA compliance. I believe we're now approaching, what, 30 years since that was enacted? And he himself worked with another resident to establish this committee, because that other resident, who's now deceased, had a very unfortunate set of circumstances, where she was essentially trapped on the platform coming in from a show in New York because the elevator wasn't working. And that gave way to her rallying cry to address ADA throughout the town. Her name was Carol Keena. And Alan wanted to make it clear tonight that this is a proposal he supports and one that fully addresses ADA, which is something that a community like Greenwich should be in compliance with. Finally, I think it's important to note the role that Greenwich Plaza Inc. and the Ashworth family have played in this town. These are, this is a known entity to us. These are Greenwich residents. These are people who are deeply vested in the Greenwich community through many generations with documented philanthropy and heritage, who have given back to the town. And I think that is important in the overall value proposition in assessing the benefits to the town, protecting the interests of the town while providing them the response to go forward, because they care about the community. This is not some outside developer just looking to make a quick profit. These are people who have shown and demonstrated they care about the community. So as you look at this and you look at what they're proposing and the professionals I brought in, I'm sure that you will do your due diligence, a hard job, one we're thankful for that you signed up to do, very thankful, and hope that, over the time, that we can have a transformative redevelopment that serves the town, not just for 10 years, 20 years, but for the next 50 years. And recognizing, finally, that you're not just the Planning and Zoning Commission, you really are the economic development arm of the town by virtue of your ability to grant approvals for land use. And I believe Greenwich Plaza has and remains the largest single-property taxpayer in the town. So I think that fact is relevant to what's done here and how it's done. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Ms. Festoliotis, and you'll probably have to still give your name to the court representative.
Yeah, I will. I always hate following Peter, by the way. My name is Karen Festoliotis. I am on the BET, but I'm speaking as an individual tonight. Just to correct the record, Frank Pyle, he referred to downtown, the downtown area in the 70s as being seedy. As a person who worked at one of the pizza places down there, I can tell you that we had the Food Mart, we had Quinn's Market, we still have St. Moritz, who survived all these years. And it's true, we had a couple of bars, and that's, I think, where the reputation came from, but it wasn't really seedy. I'm also one of the few in town, I think, that can remember what Greenwich was like before the Ashrofts built the train station. I actually remember as a young kid bounding across the tracks as the diesels came in, putting a penny on the track and watching them smush it and then getting it after that. When the Ashrofts built the building in '72, actually the two buildings and the train station, there was a lot of debate back then, and a lot of people didn't like it. But it became part of our fabric, and it's now what it is. I'm not one that's supporting this current design, only because I think that Greenwich, the charm of Greenwich is not glass facades with lighted interiors. I'm not a fan, for example, of the Apple Building or the Chase Bank. I think that we can design better. We can design a structure that will speak to us, but it will not be a New York City-type of building. It will be a Greenwich-type building. I've heard a lot tonight about Grand Central and how we want it to be like Grand Central. I don't particularly care for that type of architecture in Greenwich. It's great in New York. I don't think it's great here.
You mean the Bozarts?
Right. I also am a fan of the Park Pocket Park, but I think there needs to be more green and less pavement. If it's going to be a park, let's make it a park. The food thing on the corner that anchors the corner, I'm a little skeptical about in this area, only because they've tried it in Portchester, the Tarry Market, for example, and it didn't really work because it's closed now. So I'm not really sure if that really would work here. So while I'm excited that we're going to revitalize the area, I think that we need to put a little bit more thought into the structures, how it will look. We aren't New York. We are a New England town. I'd like to see more of that charm going forward.
Thank you, ma'am. Sir.
Good evening. My name is Joe Masher, and I'm the Chief Operating Officer of Botai Cinemas. And we would frankly love to be...
You're not going to comment on the architecture, are you?
Yes, I am about the theater. That's exactly why I'm here. We would love to be a part of this project. We have a great relationship with the Ashforth Company. If it was not for the Ashforth Company, that current theater would not be there right now, and Greenwich would not have a movie theater. So it's the relationship that we have with them that we've had since we've acquired that theater in 2006 from the Crown Organization that has really led us here. Botai Cinemas is a four-generation family-owned company whose owners live here in Greenwich, still owned by the same family that started it in 1900. I've been the Chief Operating Officer now for going on 16 years. What we're asking for is a 25,000-square-foot boutique theater that we really think will fit in with the character of Greenwich. We don't build cookie-cutter theaters. You know, the one that's there now, we inherited. I actually happen to love it. I love that big auditorium. It'd be sad to see it go, but... We're actually, you know, we don't build cookie-cutter theaters. We tailor each theater to the town that we're building in. We are currently, right now, going through a wave of renovations, giving people the modern movie amenities that they like, luxury reclining chairs that people can reserve ahead of time, a variety of food options, and we tailor the menus to different towns. For instance, in downtown Stamford, when we launch our food and beverage operation at the Majestic Theater on Summer Street this fall, we'll have brunch, so we'll have movie brunch with egg sandwiches and mimosas, et cetera. In Greenwich, I'm picturing lobster rolls and, you know, some kind of really like more upscale seafood pasta kind of amenities that we'd have there and upscale beverage options as well, more so than we'd have currently in our Norwalk Theaters. However, if you've not been to our Norwalk Theaters or to the one on Summer Street yet, I encourage you to do that and test it out and see. It's really revolutionized movie going throughout the United States, and we really like to bring that to Greenwich. The current theater, now with three screens, cannot adequately serve the community. It does not offer modern amenities. It really got crushed when Portchester opened. The theater's been struggling. It is not bringing people en masse downtown to support the restaurants and retail that it should and that the new one would. So we are asking for a 25,000-foot box. We would love to continue our relationship with both film festivals, and, you know, thank you for being here to support the theater project as well. And yeah, that's what we'd love.
A question that we asked today. How long ago did we try to do the Arts Center? 10 years ago? About 10 years ago, Greenwich tried to do some sort of performing arts center. And it didn't take off because of lease issues. Is it at all possible for a movie theater to have a dual life and have a stage that could also accommodate the performing arts in this space that you're creating? Is that at all possible, or is it not practical?
If you want to give me 50,000 feet in the second floor, sure. And 25,000 feet, it would be very difficult. But what we do, what we will offer in this theater, I already have an agreement with National Cinema Media to bring the Metropolitan Opera broadcasts here, so we'll have live Metropolitan Opera broadcasts. We'll have a birthday party facility where parents can rent for children, you know, to have a children's birthday party and a movie. The auditoriums will be available for rent in the mornings for business meetings, et cetera. But in order to have a stage and everything, I think you need an auditorium with 300 to 400, 500 seats to be successful.
If it was, say, 100 or 200, if you could combine the 200 seaters that you have somehow, if you had a wall that moved and had a stage, that doesn't work?
Probably not with soundproofing.
It's just that our dream of having a performing arts center just goes farther away, and this is a perfect location because you could take the train in from anywhere.
Well, this is something new to me. I'd have been, I'd heard this idea before.
I just tossed it out. No, I mean, it was just something that I've always been sad that we don't have that opportunity here, but it's not feasible given the design of what works. Okay.
Do you, does Botai have any performing arts centers?
No.
No, so you're strictly movies?
Yes. Yeah, in order to be competitive and to remain competitive against Portchester, we really need to do, you know, six screens, yeah, to be able to offer a variety of product to keep people in town and keep people going to the restaurants.
Yeah, I'm thinking about things that I think Greenwich Ballet doesn't have a stage it can use in town, for example, at all.
We can put a portable one in front, sure.
You know, and that's not, that's not a huge space need, and I think that you could accommodate. I mean, we do have a big, anyway, I just wanted to ask, because...
Well, we can think about it.
That dream, that pipe dream goes further each time. But thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Masher about the theater? Six screens seems optimal to you with two of the theaters being...
Six to seven, yeah. With 546 seats.
Okay, 546. Yep, got that. Okay.
Yes, 546. That's what we're asking for, which is 108 less than a current theater has.
Yeah. And while as long as you're here, I'm going to go into the weeds for two seconds.
Please.
Because you may not come back. Right now, theoretically, the approval that was given long ago for this theater is that you wouldn't have any showings during the day for anybody but children. Now, I know that's not the case. I think the whole room knows. Is continuing that make sense to you? Because I don't even understand how that condition happened. It's not like a five-year-old's going to not need to be in a car that gets parked when they go to the movies.
Or be in school.
But if they go at a 2:30 matinee or whenever they get out of school, mom's going to park the car and go in with them.
Well, we play whatever's available, whatever comes out from Hollywood. And what we've tried to do with this three-screen theater in order to keep it competitive is to play the best independent product we can find and also the best family product.
I'm asking you a different question. Does it make sense to continue this restriction that in theory only children can go in the daytime?
I don't know of any other restriction anywhere else where that would...
Okay, so the applicant has kindly offered that it would continue. If we can work our way to resolving the parking, it seems that a theater is better business if you can use it during the day, especially when you've got the film festival that is during the day. So in theory, it was a prohibited activity, but it doesn't make sense to me that we continue prohibiting you having daytime use. To me, I haven't polled the rest of the commission, but as I read it, I had never known you had that restriction.
Yeah. It was, you know, you're limited to what Hollywood has, and there are often times where there aren't family movies that are in the marketplace. You know, come fall, they start, you know, with horror and independent film and things like that and upscale commercials, so you really don't get a lot of family stuff again until Christmas.
I also know a lot of people who, they like going to them. They're retired, and they want to go with all the girlfriends to a movie in the afternoon, and that's kind of what the film festivals do as well. Okay. I just wanted to validate that with you. It didn't make sense to me. It seems like it limits the business.
I've never seen it anywhere else in any other theater we operate or any other theater in the nation.
Okay. All right, so we would, I see that Ms. Cronin has taken note of the questions.
All right, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, sir.
Ms. Alvin, if I may, did anybody lose a wallet? It was, I think, in that back corner.
Just open it up and see whose it is. We know you're not going to steal the money, Katie.
Oh, it's Karen's. It's Karen's.
No, no, you can't look. You're alone. Mr. Cohen.
If I may get back to architecture for a moment.
Yes, sir.
We're finished with our architecture presentation, but the reason that we're here before you on a preliminary basis is to get feedback. So we've gotten feedback from the commissioners. We've got feedback from the public. As you noted, Michelle is taking notes like crazy, and we do have comments that we will take into consideration before we come back to you. But it might be a good idea, before we go too far down one path or another, if we also were able to get the input of the ARC. And so I think I would ask if we could get this referred to ARC sooner rather than later.
I, the one comment I have about the architecture is I'm struggling to reconcile what we have heard tonight with what we heard for the POCD. The POCD input sounded more like what Ms. Festoliotis, if she's still here, the overwhelming comment was to retain community character, no tall, no super-modern. We got that over and over and over again. The commentary we've heard tonight has been very different. So I don't know how to reconcile that, what that means, if that's representative of how the town will respond or not. I wonder if we shouldn't try to get our own information. So we want to build something that the town's going to love and be glad that got done. And I think we're here in that case to respond to what the community wants the most. And all we heard, New England, village character, in fact, I've heard this when the selectmen have interviewed us for staying on the commission, that that's what the message that they get as well. That being the case, if the, we'd have to explore it before we really gave you feedback. And I'm not even, I think, go ahead and talk to ARC, but we have to somehow figure out what the town is looking for.
Sure, that's ultimately going to be your job. ARC, as we know, is advisory-only. But I would assume that in addition to the comments you've heard tonight and from your own members, that you'd want that input as well, and we certainly do before we go off in one direction or another. So we'll do that before we come back to you, and we'll take into consideration the comments we've heard tonight.
On the architecture, I hear that people love the idea of something that is surprising, that has great light, that that seems to have resonance. And a lot of the stuff that we've talked about tonight seems to be working for people. Then the only question is, what about the streetscape and this polarity we're hearing?
Yeah, we heard that tonight.
A little bit. We heard it, we have a book of feedback that's this thick from the community sessions, and everybody wanted New England... and everybody wanted New England village character, which isn't what we're talking about tonight, and I just want to head in a direction that the community is satisfied with.
I'm sure you do, and I'm sure you don't want to see a Disneyland kind of approach, a gutsy little-
No.
Low-scale buildings.
No, absolutely, you're absolutely right.
So that's one of the reasons we brought in a firm like Byer, Linder &amp; Bell, because they're capable of thinking new things with some older materials. But in any event, we will go to ARC before we get back to you. But before we sit down, I have the impression that you'd like to hear from John Canning about the drop-off pickup situation, and he's prepared to talk about that and answer any other questions.
Does anybody want a break first for five minutes?
I do desperately.
Five minutes, 10 minutes? 10 minutes. Five, okay, make it five, I've been overruled, five minutes.